Oh, I've been here 12 hours now in this building. So really time.
All right. We're live.
Thank you. All right, so those that are unfamiliar with me, I am Tan Smith. I am the new department chair of the Science Department. So, and I have been told that you all have had access to this particular slideshow. So I'm going to assume pretty much that you have been through it and you have read it and including my speaker notes. So once again, our school has done amazingly well, especially in light of the changing demographics of our school, which is reflected in last year's MCAT scores. The eighth grade MCAT is going to a new generation of MCATs, which will be fully implemented in 2026. So we are going to, we are fully aware of that. And we will be implementing new strategies and new questions in class amongst our six through eight teachers in order to get our kids ready for that, you know, in a couple of years. So you see that, you can see that we are well above average, well above state average for all but two of our items. We've had a, we had an increase in our meeting expectations. We did have an increase in not meeting expectations. However, talking to the middle school students, teachers, some of that had to do with a lot of pullouts. And of course, students miss class or miss instruction when it's pulled out. And our core, I mean, our quest program is not totally in line curriculum wise with the MCATs and what the teachers are doing in the, in the classroom. So we're going to look into aligning that better. Biology, once again, stellar scores for this coming year, or for last year, we did, you can see that our exceeding expectations, the number of students receiving that grade actually went up. And you can also see that we did not score below any of the state average on any one item. And let's see, and this was our next steps. So I'm just gonna open it up to questions.
I just noticed on the very first graph, it's like two years ago, it was 4%, and then this year up to 7%.
Right.
And so that was actually three, and then five this year.
That's right. And that, and that is because we had some very high need students that we are not always catching, our students that should be on IEPs. So, and once again, like I said, this is kind of reflecting our change in demographics, that these children that are coming up from elementary school and coming into our middle school that have social emotional needs, that are need to be addressed, et cetera, et cetera, we're having a much higher number of that in our school. So that number, you know, we're, you know, our goal is to not have that go up, but to it go down. And so, yes, we are trying to implement, do more alignment between the quest and the quest program and classroom instruction, as well as between, we're gonna look at alignment between, a vertical alignment between elementary and middle school to try to get that number lower and keep it low as our demographics change. Any other questions?
So, yeah, what specifically? Because like Jess said.
Yeah, so.
We're all, we're, science seems to be better than the math and the ELL that I see here, a little bit, but we're still about a third of the district not up to the meeting expectations.
So.
So you said, social emotional between the elementary two, you know, we've seen this for the last few years, I think. So what specifically is being done? Is it working? Is it not working? What's gonna change?
So not, if you look back at the number, so partially meeting expectations is not failing. Okay? So our not meeting expectations is really kind of where we're gonna, you know, we really need to, I mean, not that we don't want us bring met, partially met up, however, it's to be noted that it's not failing. So not meeting expectations, we are, once again, that is a, that is a group, what do I say? That is, like, the whole school has to be involved in that, especially with the eighth grade. You know, we need buy-in from our special education. We need to get the people that run that, the people that do the quest, we need them on, in line or on board, right? So we may have to start looking at alternate test forms for the students as time goes on. So we will, like I said, as far as eighth grade goes, we will start incorporating more of the performance assessment tasks that are, that DSD has provided us to get us ready for our, the new next gen test that is coming up. So basically, it's, we just go back, we look at standards, we look at questions, we see where we are, you know, falling down, or where we're not quite hitting the nail on the head as far as particular items. So, but also remember, we are way above state average. So in both our bio and our eighth grade.
You mentioned partially meeting is not failing, but can, so what does that mean? Partially meeting versus meeting? I'm sure for you guys, having the data, being able to look at since June, having all the additional data reports from the state, you understand this. Parents sitting at home, seeing that a third of our district isn't meeting expectations. Right here, as a parent, my kid is meeting, my kid's either meeting or not meeting, there is no partially or exceeding. Like, if they're not at least meeting the expectations that they're expected to meet, it sounds like they're not doing well. I understand you know it's not failing, but for parents, we have 30 to 40% of the district in any given class or subject that aren't at least at meeting.
I guess one way you could, one way you could look at that is grades, A, B, C. C is partially meeting expectations. Like, if I give a student a C, he has not met all my expectations for that particular subject. So a C is partially meeting expectations. Exceeding expectations is an A. Like, he met every single expectation and probably did more. So if you wanna look at it in that way, in terms of, if you wanna make that kind of connection between grades and scores on the MCAT, that would be a really good way to explain that.
That's helpful.
Yes. So you can look at it as F, C, B, and A. Anybody else?
You mentioned your vertical alignment with the elementary school.
Yes.
They're here. What specifically are you guys doing?
Well, as I was looking through the items for grade five, and I noticed that one of the things that the elementary schools were weakened was in the areas of physics and chemistry, which is not unusual, generally because our elementary students, or teachers, I'm sorry, did not have any direct training or coursework in physics and chemistry specifically. So I believe that either Sally or Carol, I had a couple of years ago, had discussed having PD for our elementary teachers, where Chris, our chemistry teacher, Chris Covino, and I could lead a PD to have the teachers, the elementary teachers feel more comfortable and have deeper subject matter knowledge, because we're kind of the sneeze, right? In either chemistry and physics. And hopefully get that, those two areas reinforced to get the teachers more comfortable, so they teach more of it, they have a deeper knowledge of it. And hopefully that would translate into not only higher MCAT scores for the fifth grade, but would then come up into the middle school and, you know, they have that more solid foundation for what our six through eight have to teach them to get them ready for the eighth grade MCATs.
How's that thing going?
Pardon?
How's that thing going?
Well, actually, we talked about it a couple of years, but we just never, like, this was before COVID, and all I can say is COVID happened. And so, you know, now we're back to, you know, relooking at, you know, trying to maybe get that, that alignment a little better and to, you know, reinforce those areas.
So what specifically is happening right now? You guys got this data in June.
Oh, can I just, I, I did do professional development with the elementary schools last year.
Okay.
So very specifically, it was a half day PD that I had gone in with this, the fifth, fourth and fifth grade, some of the third grade teachers. And we did specific science professional development, which is excellent.
Right. And so we'd like to continue that this year. So we just have to, like, make it happen.
And to your point also, what specifically we're doing, so this was a transition year, so I had looked at a lot of this DIT data. So moving into role of administrator, I am piloting really a school-wide option for a goal to really partner with the staff in scaffolding learning for our students with disabilities in our ELLs. That is the largest learning gap that we see. So if, and then targeting that as professional and student goals, we can also wrap around professional development, so we have more people talking about the same, they're trying the same type of supports for our students in the multiple different areas.
Is that the group you refer to as high needs?
Yes, yes.
So is the 28% here that's not meeting, is, are they all high needs?
No.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So.
And I think it's a mischaracterization to say they're not meeting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're right, you're right. They're not at the meeting expectations level, yeah.
And I believe that about the school-wide goals, I believe that was in the document that had Sally, and I believe that you asked to be, the staff that gave access to you. So there's several of us.
Yeah, we were blocked when I went to look at it, and I didn't get a chance to back to it.
Yeah, there's, there's several of us in the Science Department that are participating in the school-wide goals. So we're hoping that that, you know, helps.
And if I could add, we also have a scheduling committee this year, so we're looking at our schedule here to see if they could do about more opportunities for activity supports for students.
For the biology and the science.
For all, for all.
Yeah. So I did not, I don't mean to monopolize the time, but there's just so many questions. I noticed in Carol's newsletter this past week, the enrichment programs at the elementary level, BMS has a ton, BES not so much, there's been talk about certain parents trying to start up a STEM committee or a STEM advisory board. I noticed there's a particular enrichment at BMS for STEM. Are any of these enrichment programs being aligned with what's being done in the schools? And is there a way to leverage that to get more employees to sort of help this? I mean, the parent groups, they're doing great with all these enrichment programs. Is there a way to align them with these and just have them as another tool?
So I can, I can address that, and then you can talk about, a little bit about the, what can be done. But there are science skills that have become the predominant feature in looking at. So as, as content is being created and the frameworks are being developed, there has been a shift from the, you know, memorizing content to being able to apply and use skills. So we have a focused, basically, set of science practices. Those practices can be performed by any student at any level. So any of these enrichment opportunities are going to have students asking questions, modeling, you know, communicating, developing, you know, questions and, you know, hypotheses. They're gonna be doing those. Those are the skills that are transferable with any of the, you know, enrichment opportunities. And so all of those enrichment opportunities are just being able to take an opportunity to kind of leap in and not be afraid to investigate. That's huge. And I think those opportunities really help students progress, no matter which level they're working on and trying to do.
Yeah, it's almost like a marketing plan to kind of like get them excited so that they go on and they are more curious in the classroom, right? I know these after-school programs, the parent groups, it ebbs and flows depending on which parents are involved, I understand that, but I mean, BMS is, forgive me, KMS have this, and every time that calendar comes up from Carol, you look at the schedule, I'm afraid the Boylston Elementary students aren't, just aren't getting the same equity that BMS has. It's, I don't know if that's gonna impact this, I don't know, but that's the state of our district right now, with two separate schools. This is not a personal comment on Cindy at all. And it's, it's, I don't admit that it's within your control, it's parent groups running it right now.
Well, I think it's the link that runs the after-school programs. And historically speaking, there used to be after-school enrichment at BES as well.
Right, it just doesn't seem to be there right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Um, I put out a survey of parents asking, because I talked to John about the link and what that looks like, it's a tremendous program. Talked to our PTO about it a little bit, I think we need to pump that up, get more people involved. I put out a survey to families to see if there are any volunteers that would like to come in and kind of seek one, that would like to do something with STEM. So that's something we can work on, we can try to build it up. I will throw this in there, that students are coming to me with many, many different ideas, they want the LEGOLE, they want these things, it's just getting the adults in there.
Yeah, I remember when BES had more than BMS, and that was upsetting. It was.
Fair.
Good work. It was. Uh, yeah, that's, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great if some of the deficits and the questions that we didn't do well, like in the middle school and in the high school, be shared with Lank or maybe potential groups at BES. So, you know, there's specific skill, science skills that maybe, maybe not a monthly club, or maybe it could just be like, you know, whoever feels has those skills, maybe can reach out and, yeah, I'll go where I can do that.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, the other would be the idea, so.
I just wondered, like, the specifics of it, like, you know, like, oh, please do something, or like, oh, we have this need, we didn't do well, and there are those questions. Is there anyone in the community that has these skills that would really like to come in and do something? Might get more likes.
And one of the other things, we have clubs for the older kids, we need for younger kids too. It's because there's an interest, and if we start there, they go upon those skills.
Yeah, the gimme gardens are always upset when they can't do the original programs. Usually, a lot of them are first and then, or second, right? I, that's great, I mean, just, any information we can have, well, specifically, what's going on between the two schools? I know John, last year, he told us about how you work on the literacy of the ELL, right? With high school teacher? I mean, it's.
I'm sorry.
We need a new single building. We need a new single building for our elementary school for us, and we need a single blossom at each elementary school to prepare them for middle and high school and then the world.
You know, I think what Lisa said earlier was so important, it's the attitude around science. It's that willingness to take risks and think outside the box. Those experiences, whether it's LEGOLE or whatever the activity is, if it promotes kids thinking more broadly than what they do in science or literacy or, it's gonna be enhanced. You've got fifth grade knowledge, but our fifth graders are thinkers rather than just like test takers. They're gonna do that. And if you're part of it, you know, it took long pretty long. We're worried about some students, some of whom, we've had this conversation before, some of whom, this test is not appropriate. But, you know, there's, you know, we're a really, really good school system, we constantly aspire to be better.
That makes me think of another question, John. You mentioned how we compare to the state, and that's great, we have to do that for a bunch of reasons and all that. How do we compare to our competitors? So either, maybe competitors isn't the right word, but schools that we lose kids to in ninth grade, schools around us that are similar size, similar resources, how do we compare to those?
That data isn't always available for science?
No, it's not.
Because the best, the easiest way, part of my presentation, if you saw my presentation, I can put the slide up soon, is the, the growth and achievement plot.
Yeah, they don't.
That graph. And so what I've done this year is I've put up every single district in the state, and I specifically show you where we scored sixth, seventh, eighth, and tenth compared to everybody else in the state. So if you wanna take a look at that, you can see our demographics as far as income is concerned, you know, where we are, and you can get to see the whole, where everybody in the state is on that. Typically speaking, we, you know, as far as English is concerned, we do very well compared to where area, schools in our area, specifically against, I love to measure us up against Conca, Carlisle, Bromfield, schools like that, that have incredible amounts of resources to see how we do against them, because we're not even close to being in the same ballpark as they are, and we do pretty well. We actually do, I'm being, I'm being humble, we do very well.
That's the kind of slide I'd like to see.
That data's not.
Yeah, it's in, it's my presentation.
It's in there with everything, but like, you know, a select, you know, like, I use the term competitors, but that, they would be one of their.
Yeah, it's, it's, as part of my presentation last year, I've incorporated slides like that over the years to show against, you know, show against the growth and as well as the achievement, because it's imperative that we look at both, you know? And I have heard you in the years passing, again this year, you know, you're hammering the point about that not everybody is meeting and exceeding, and therefore we're not doing our job, or we're not meeting those goals, and I completely disagree with that.
It's not, it's not about you're not doing your job.
But that's how it comes across, Mike.
Okay.
So it's, you know, no, it's because it is a bone of contention of mine to hear you continuously say that, and it's just not the way to read the data. So part of this, the slide that I'll show you is that, you know, that expectation that every single student's gonna be there is completely unrealistic. It's just not the way it works. And when I'll show you, like, for sixth grade specifically, you know, the best districts in the school, in the state, don't even reach 90% of their students in the meeting and exceeding. It's just not a realistic thing for this one particular type of test. So it's, it's imperative that we look at, you know, we have that in our mind, that not everybody's gonna reach there. It's just, it's just not a realistic thing for the types of students that we have to, that have to take these tests. As John said, you know, there are some kids who are made to take these tests, that they're just not going to do well because of who they are and what they're dealing with. It, the, the state is almost set up for half those kids fail. It's, it is completely unfair.
So I wanna respond to you. I do not think that you're not doing your job, that's, I've never said that, I don't think.
That's how it comes across.
If it comes across that way, it's because I'm trying to do my job where we're in charge of all the money that's going into the district. We put a huge increase in the budget last year, we're looking for another huge increase in the budget this year. We had the FinCom in Berlin saying, you know, the schools already get too much money, what results are they doing for it? We should, there are some on that committee that wanna pare it back and cut it. So my question is, when, when we see these scores of 70% meeting or exceeding, that's still a third of the district, not, now, you can explain it by saying, well, you know, these kids shouldn't be taking the test, the state set them up to fail. Nobody's gonna argue that the state doesn't set you up to fail. But the number, I mean, the numbers are, the numbers, I did look at it, yes, I think 89 was the top percentage of meeting and exceeding in the one that I looked at, so that's 11% not doing it. We're at anywhere from 35 to 40, 28 including science. It's just, what I see is, I don't want, I don't need to ask a bunch of questions about the superstars or the all-stars, because I know they're doing well. It's the high need students, the low-income students that might not have the opportunity. So if we're gonna have these huge budget increases, what are we doing to help? And comparing to the state, that's, well, good, but I don't care about what the other states are doing, because I don't pay taxes in Boston or Quincy or anywhere else, I pay taxes in Berlin, everybody else can pay taxes in Berlin for us. And so I wanna know what we're doing specifically. Yes, we are doing well. And Mary used that against the reasons for the budget last year that we're doing so well. So I wanna know when we, we're here to look at this to help with our budget discussions, when we have those discussions, what do we need to do as far as budget and policy goes to get better? Because you, I don't exist in a world where you can't get better. You can get better.
100%.
I can get better. I, hopefully I have gotten better in some things. But we don't live in a world where you don't have to get better. We, we need to continue to push. And if I just sit here and say, oh, congratulations, great job, nobody's pushing, you just have to push. It's not an indictment on you or your work.
No, I have no problem with competition. Just as had me as a teacher and as a coach.
Not as a coach.
Um, you know, so with the high need students, and this is 10th grade, we're fifth in the state. The four schools on top of this were all charter schools for 10th grade and our high need students. Our high need students killed it this year. That's one of the reasons.
This is science.
This is English.
English, okay.
So this is, you know, one of the reasons why we won the Blue Ribbon Award this year. It's because of our work with our high needs population. And it's, it's going to get more challenging as, as our high needs population continues to exponentially grow. Like, this year is going to be challenging, there's no question about it. Emily McCarthy is doing an incredible job. She's totally overworked with the amount of work that she has to do with our population that has grown, what, Lisa? Like 300% in, in a year? And it's only going to continue to go in that route. So what are we doing?
You're saying everything.
A high need students specifically are like ELL students, but also are low-income students, all kids who classify, who were classified as that high needs, and that's in Sally's presentation.
Has grown 300% each year.
The ELL population, we went from, what, two students to 21 in two years? And we have a student in eighth grade right now who speaks absolutely no English, who is, who speaks a very rare dialect from, is it?
Pakistan.
Pakistan. And our eighth grade teacher has to get this kid to pass MCAT. I mean, that's absurd. Thankfully, thankfully, we have, you know, so there's some good AI that she's looking into that helps break down material, like a novel, she can put it in, and the two, and the novel will be spit out at like a second grade level in this kid's specific dialect. But this is work that our eighth grade teacher has to do for this one student in addition to all of the 95 other students that she has. It is an incredibly difficult job, as our individual students' needs, you know, are the amount of students with growing needs, and we have one teacher in a classroom has to lead all these, it's increasingly exponentially difficult to continue to help these.
Will you have a thing coming tomorrow with that, with Mary? Because this is exactly the story we're gonna tell.
Well, I mean, really, what you're talking about is you're talking about budget allocation, right? How you allocate your budget. And Peter, I don't, no disrespect, but I don't remember anybody coming to the department chairs and saying, what do you need? How much money is it gonna cost? So.
Doesn't that the budget process?
Right? I mean, nobody's asked us, because we'll tell you right off the bat, faculty, we need faculty, and in this high school and in the middle school, to address exactly what Peter's talking about.
That's what we're trying to do, what do we need as budget goals?
You know, if you, like, why don't you, like, loop us all in? Why don't you have Peter and Steve and Francine and myself and all the other stakeholders, Matt Hager, whoever, come in and say, okay, you got this big budget increase, you know, why don't we talk about allocating it where, you know, we feel that it needs to be allocated?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that was the process, that's true.
That's why, that's how we came, you know, identified that we are, we need a math teacher, and that's how we identified.
Right. I mean, we keep identifying that and nothing like. Well, it, that's true. I was not there yesterday, I just was taking care of another matter. This is true, but we have, I know Lisa, and we have been advocating for, you know, new math teacher, et cetera, et cetera, like, we need a new tech teacher, you know, to meet district goals, right? And we've been talking about this for years. So we've been talking about this since the last time the district goals were written. So, you know, and a lot of this yet to be materialized, so, you know, budget allocation, that's great, let's put it where we need it. I mean, if you wanna try to see or have a chance of, you know, increasing MCAT scores for those students, then we need the resources.
Well, that's exactly what we're asking.
I mean, it sounds like it was, some of that's in the free year.
Yeah.
It is in the budget. The ELL, the extra ELL teacher, it's all in the budget.
All right, we gotta get back to MCAT scores.
Yeah.
Peter, take.
Part of my veteran move was to have Tan's go first, basically just say ditto. So, I mean, I'm very pleased with the English scores this past year. Again, we use 10th grade as like the benchmark, because that's what we're getting to. This is the, this is the year that school gets looked at, et cetera, et cetera. Our students did very well this year, you can see the stats here on how our students were. Top 5%. As far as our students exceeding and meeting and where we are in our scores. I'm pleased with the middle school scores. Again, we'll just use these slides. This is grade six, this is the growth and achievement. So this is the entire state, every single district categorized by district percentage of low income. You can see, obviously, students that live in districts of high income, they do well compared to students in districts that don't have high income. That's just a tough reality, a lot of people don't wanna look at, but that's always what it comes down to, more so, you know, year after year after year. What I was able to do is basically just show where our district falls compared to the rest of the state. This is sixth grade, we had our student growth percentile of 61, proceeding, meeting and exceeding was at 63. We're in that low income is the 21 to 30%. So, you know, traditionally over the years, we've been up in here, but we are now starting to fall into these categories as far as our students and our population. I'm pleased with that number. And again, you can see that, you know, there are a few outliers. There's one district here who hits 92% as far as exceeding and meeting, but the majority of the state, you know, is barely probably in this category, just about 60%. And this is just the reality of the test. So I like this. I think it's a really good visual to get a sense of where the state is on this test that's given once a year. And we have to always remember this is not the greatest indicator of how our students are performing. Especially our students who do way better with performance assessments rather than taking a test and things like that. Okay, so that's grade six. Grade seven. Are 65% meeting and exceeding, uh, standard growth percentile is 51. That's where we are in relation to the rest of the state. Grade eight. 62% meeting and exceeding. Standard growth percentile at 51. And this is grade 10. We're at 61% for standard to growth percentile, meeting and exceeding at 87%. That's the district number. The school number is actually 88%. The difference between the district number and the school number is the district numbers include students who will take the test, who don't actually come to Tohoto, that we are still, still count in our numbers. So we can have students who don't attend Tohoto who actually count in our numbers. So it's important that we look at that. Traditionally, what I'll look at is just the school numbers. So, you know, we're looking at the students who work with us in front of us that we're responsible for. Even though the numbers don't count there.
Grade 10 is the graduation requirement.
Correct. And this, what's happened here again is I went over this a year and a half ago. This current sophomore class, the graduation standards get tougher. And it's only going to get more difficult for the class of 2031. So this, this is when I talk about the moving goalposts.
Yeah, I, I remember that. As far as the graduation requirement, where is this, is this our number? I think it's what?
Every single student has graduated, has reached the graduation requirement.
And what, what is, how do they measure it versus the data they give us?
It's based on, um, I gave you that scale in my presentation last year. It's based on like the, uh, where they fall on the scaled score and then they basically say the cutoff is here. Even if they're partially meeting in, or some cases even in the not meeting category, they can still achieve the graduation requirements. I think this year is the year where any student who is in the not meeting category now will not be in the graduation requirement. They will have to retake the exam. If they are impartially meeting, we have to put them on what's called an educational proficiency plan. And what that is, is we then monitor them more closely, uh, through their junior and senior year. They do not necessarily have to take the MCAS again, but if they pass all of our requirements, which are our courses, um, we usually say that they have reached graduation competency levels. And therefore can achieve graduation. Now, if there's a student, um, let's say who was in our life skills program, who takes the alternative end of MCAS, it almost guaranteed not to pass. The state will never allow those kids not to pass.
They do not pass.
Yeah, they will not pass. That's just the way it is. So oftentimes when you see like our not meeting category, like when we look at something like this for grade 10, you know, this year we happen to have nobody not in the not meeting expectations. In the district, there was, again, it was a student who does not attend here. They were in the not meeting category, but none of our students reached there. We only had eight students in the partially meeting expectations, but they were all in the passing categories. So they have passed high school.
Yeah, and you're saying the 24 test is where that starts?
Um, it'll be this year. Yep. So the class of, what are they, the class of 26? Yeah, so they, it, it moves up. So we're in the partially meeting category. There are some numbers that are the graduation requi, they've passed for the graduation requirement and others that are not. They've now, um, made the window smaller. So only a certain amount of numbers that are in the partially meeting category will be graduation requirement now. And so the fall in like two years, five years, I think they eliminate completely. If you're the partially meeting, you won't graduate. Which is, that's going to be, that'll be interesting to watch what happens in the state with that.
Have you had, I know it didn't happen this year. Have you had years where pass where students didn't meet the graduation requirement in this test?
Not any.
Math, I don't know. And then they don't, they can't pass a lot of them.
So the, um, MCAS halls is an alternative assessment, um, given to certain students. And they can, they can achieve a passing score for that alternative assessment. But in the state testing, they're considered a failure. So they're considered not meeting. So one of the greatest achievements um, for when I was teaching was one of the students did a beautiful portfolio and passed that portfolio and I was so proud of that student. Um, but it appeared on my, on the data that, um, it was a not meeting failure. So that I think is, is disappointing because.
Like how come that me? I mean, if they're on an EPP, that just makes no sense to me. Right. A lot of it doesn't make sense.
I agree with Jess because that's why they're trying to do a wave of the test. I mean, there's talk in the state about, I don't know who's pushing it, but they want to do a wave of the test. And last I heard, there was some serious power behind that.
I've kind of resigned myself. This is the way.
This is the way.
It could probably be the year I would touch, but.
There's too much politics, too much money.
Which.
And like invested.
Too many stakeholders.
And you mentioned if they do fail, the 10th grade, there are opportunities for them to learn.
They have five total chances to take the exam and pass it.
So the following two years, they, we also, so if they don't pass any of those five, you said there are so other, if they pass the courses or.
If they are in the not meeting category, have not met the graduation requirement, they do not get high school diploma. They get a certificate of attendance.
Just a not meeting, but even the partial meeting is that there's a group of them that like.
Might not achieve the graduation requirements.
So for those students.
They have to take the exam again until they meet the graduation requirement, I believe. I'll have to look at that again because again, they changed that recently.
So is the only way to graduate by passing this test going forward, starting in 24?
Right now.
I mean, it's, it's always, it's always been a graduation requirement. You, you have, you have, it's like, as.
Just earlier you mentioned, if they don't pass their other criteria.
Yeah, it's the educational proficiency plan. If they are in the, um, partially meeting and not have met the graduation requirement, we could put them on an EPP. And if we designate that they have met the graduation requirement based on our standards, then they can graduate. I believe that's the case. I'll have to read that again. It's been a while since I read that.
Okay.
You know, uh, we had someone come talk to us that told us to have an elevator spiel for when we go to these finance companies and the meetings and stuff. And so it would, like, you know, those, those little tidbits of like our ELL students are this to that. Like it would be really good to get some of those facts that are really like, wow, to, to be part of that elevator spiel.
Yeah, 300% is that other word?
I, I don't, I'm just, I'm not the math guy.
I have, I have, I don't know, but, um, I think that was, um, it is, I think it's legitimately 176%.
Okay. Is it from one to 22? Is that number?
Two is, it went from.
Yeah, that's the data that I, I had been working with for a particular, it's every year you have to work with it.
Sure.
Like a very specific set of data. And I have, um, I have that information that I can send along.
Yeah, I agree. That would be.
So something I want to talk to about like what we have done in the past. Last year, John and I and Carol met quite a bit to talk about the high school curriculum, curriculum with the elementary school curriculum. I know John worked really hard with his school. The scores this year in Berlin were incredible. I was blown away with the English scores in Berlin this year, grades three, four and five. 20, 30 points higher than the state average on every single question. It was unbelievable. So, and again, it was like, remember our conversations about what can we do to get the kids ready when they get up here to have these? Whatever you did, the numbers in Berlin this year, I was like, whoa. It was great. Um, and one of the things that I did as well, uh, last year is I started to build different databases to keep track of how graduating class does historically from third grade to graduation. The state does not keep track of that for us. So I started building that ourselves so we can look at kids longitudinally. Uh, that as a whole class, how they do. So we look at the graduation, uh, graduating class. We also look at each grade, how is grade six done over the years? Again, the state doesn't keep that. Oh, they keep that for about four or five years. But it really gives us a good look how we're doing, um, against the curriculum. Another piece of data that they don't give us that we built was looking at every single standard that we get measured on and how we've done over, um, those particular questions. We are now in year four of building that. So after about five years, we'll have a really good look at how are we doing curriculum wise on each of the major strands? Our areas of weakness, our areas we're heading down, areas we're increasing. So that is something we're doing outside of this stuff. I don't want to bore you with a lot anymore of that, but that's a Google classroom page that I've set up and I've included everybody in the districts, all the English teachers on that. Um, so they can take a look and have that data available to them at any given time.
I think that's something we really need to ask them. Or just, you know, know where it is where you refer to it.
Yeah. So that's something that we're doing as well.
And I, I believe from our previous meeting, they're, we're looking, what's the difference between Wales and Berlin, right? I mean, like why? It's the same curriculum, it's the same instructors. So I, I believe Kathy is, is that we're trying to.
It's an ongoing process, yeah. And it's a challenge. It's there are different communities with different priorities, um, different challenges. You know, I, I will say, a lot of the teachers in Berlin are just kind of that professional sweet spot. You know, young, they have a ton of energy, experienced enough to really bring to bear, you know, best practice. So, and that's not to say that are good friends and.
Because it was, it was 10, 15 years ago. It was.
It was rivers.
You know, and the population changes and Tans talked about this, the social, emotional, where are some of our kids are, you know, to get them to sit down and take a test. I mean, come to sixth grade lunch sometime, see what that's like.
It's no way.
It, our administration is doing an incredible job this year to try to get the kids that are not in control. And so to try to get them under control, acting civilly, sit in the classroom, do their work, there's a lot of work to be done on those things before the academics can even be touched. And that's been, that's been an issue, if I'm going to be blunt. So these are, those are huge challenges.
These 10 graders, they, were they, was it their first year of middle school during COVID? Was that, was that the year? Does that affect it at all? Or have you seen anything? Have you seen anything from that? Is it, or is that done by now?
No, he would have been second grade. The sixth grade is success. The eighth is COVID.
Seventh would have been 20 and then they were in eighth and the twelfth.
The sixth grade would have been second grade.
I mean, either way, is there a second year of middle school? Is that, is there still a hangover effect from that?
Little bit, not necessarily. I would say last year's graduating class was the one that was probably the most affected.
Yeah.
Um, and they still did well on MCAS. It's, we tell them now, it's like, it's over guys. Enough. We all have our issues. So they get to work. For the most part, they're responsive to that.
That's an interesting thing to look in the teachers, like Julie mentioned, this is the food, but I wonder if it's also recess. I don't know, after, after lunch, if there's like.
I know the sixth grade still was allowed to go outside. There's still children.
We should, and that's part of the work that we're doing, the scheduling community is, is looking at the schedule and seeing if there is an opportunity. Because as a real, and we have scheduled, as Peter said, the move at time, um, I know seventh grade, you know, as well, we just get progressively, I think, as the state has you know, kind of forced upon us more and more criteria for the kids to graduate. You know, you're, you're borrowing, begging for, you know, for time, you know, with the financial literacy and, you know, there's so much that they have to get done. And sometimes it interferes with what they need.
Are you telling us like the move at time? Cause like I have a fifth grader and she was actually just like, ah, I'm going to have recess next year. But, so I don't know about it.
So it's during long walk. So, um, they take, they, so long walk is 10 minutes longer than the other periods. They're really not. So, you know, impacting, you know, could go learning from the other classes. So they use that extra time, um, you know, to go outside.
Great. Is there anything else on MCAS questions from Stoddart? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
You are welcome to leave. All right, Jess, I'm going to start giving my update on the budget subcommittee while you give the presentation off. We'll, we're going to roll the subcommittee updates. We've spent 10 minutes on this. And Carol's going to give us a brief update. And then Julie has something that she wants to discuss. And then we'll roll into votes. All right, so budget subcommittee, you may leave. Nancy pretty much gave an update to big things. Uh, what are we doing in Berlin tomorrow night? And then second thing we talked about is what Julie's been espousing later, which is the shared use of facilities policy. Um, and just a brief background, while Jess is setting up, because Laura is not here and she has the next two. Past. The district has never enforced a policy about charging youth groups in Berlin to use the facility um, on the weekends. We do have a policy in place that says a custodian must be present on the weekends when the facility is in use by, uh, groups outside of the school. Um, and in the policy it states that we are to pay the custodians time and half. So if a group such as Berlin Youth Basketball needs to use the Berlin School Gym, for let's say eight hours, that becomes, per weekend, that becomes extremely costly. Um, and well, last year, since that was not enforced and it was not built, that cost is not built into the fees. So, right now, kind of, and again, this is what we discussed at our meeting, where we're kind of at this crossroads where we either need to fix this policy or we need to keep it as is and, and enforce it.
You mentioned last year, has it ever been enforced?
Never. Not to our, not to my knowledge.
No.
I know there's a different way of operating in Berlin, community use of the school and all that. When they, I mean, have they just never, is it the town's right to use it? How, how does it work? I don't know. John, you buy no more than any of us.
Yeah. I was trying to answer a question. You said, is the town's right to use it?
I don't think that's a great term, but.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Um, it's, when a school was built, and you can jump in on this because we just got a leasing agreement from our owner to kind of, to take over the school as the stewards of the school formally. So we're having, I'm reviewing, glad we have attorney, but historically, the school was built, it was designed so that the public, the community would have access to the school. That could mean meetings, things like that. Town meeting would be held there. Any activities, it could be a launch of activity. So the building was open in various ways as needed, right? If somebody from the town requested it. I think that can only speak to, it's usually these were town meetings, it could be scouts, something like that. But there was never, in those, in those days, there were like keys. We didn't even have swipe cards. Somebody was given a key and could open it. The building was very free about how that several people had keys probably along the way and that's how it was used. I don't, I don't know if it was really used so much by the towns that, in that way, other than having to have a town meeting, these probably the basketball programs.
Yeah, since I've been on, it's just been used for basketball. RAC uses it a little bit for things like home tonight or something.
How long has it been? How many years?
Uh, several.
What was that?
I mean, I've been in Philly with basketball every time you're there. Even though the policy is in place. So I mean, it's just.
Well, the policy, however this language presents was, was put in 2022. So it's. So it was, I don't know, if it was a policy, I don't know. There was a policy.
It was January 2022.
And also even if it was, it was separate districts too. So what we all did was it's all day. did was it's all day. You know what I mean?
Because when the, when the school was built, it was pitched on town floor, that that space would be used as community space, so much so that the school entrance is locked from the gym.
That's why we pulled, yeah.
Right, right. How that language then was put in the lease, well, it was a new lease anyways, because it's regionalized, it did ask the town administrator to consider or have legal on the town and look into the shared use of bring it. We can discuss this at the.
So do you want to, do you want to, all right, so why don't we, Laura, all right, Jess, you do that, and then we'll have Laura do a quick update on policy and superintendent, and then we'll go back to Julie.
I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, that was.
No, that's okay, thank you. No, 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 I, that, so they crossed over, because we discussed it in the facility subcommittee meeting. But we're not going to solve this problem tonight, and Carol's going to talk about it too, kind of links in the whole security issue and the locked doors and, but we as a committee have some work to do on this facility stuff. I think we learned that during our, our seminar, where we, you've got to work on these leases, it's our responsibility, right? So we have some work to do, it's not for itself tonight, but I, at least I want to start delegating which subcommittees are going to do it and what are we going to do. And Julie does need to request the committee to waive some fees for the remainder of the season, because they just, they don't have the money to pay for custodian for the remainder of the season. All right, Jess, take it away.
Okay, I'm going to call Lisa up here, because there's one or two slides that maybe. So November eighth, ninth, and tenth, there was a conference down Cape Cod that included the MASSS, which is School Supervisors, and then MASC, which is School Committee. And so it was a fascinating conference, there was a ton of different lectures that you could go to, I put everything, like, everything into the drive. So I hope no one had a heart attack, but we're going to try to fly through it as quickly as possible, I know it's a late night. But we had a meeting on Friday, Lisa, Carol and I, and poor Nicole, for two hours, and we talked about all the different talks we went to. Thank you, Nicole. And, and so it was just a lot of exciting things for our district, so we really tried to take quick little bites of the most exciting materials that were here. Probably the one I'm most excited about, they had a group come and talk about Blackstone Valley Collaborative, and so we lose a lot of kids to Asabet Valley, because they want either the skills or that environment is, you know, more hands-on, is, is better for them. And so this is able to do it outside of the curriculum as an extracurricular course, it's four point oh grades, it's twelve different schools that they had that came together, they did have a three-year grant from ASA, who's American Student Assistance. And it was using resources that you currently had in the school, asking other schools in the area, I mean, they had their collaborative, to seeing what resources they had, so like, we have a robotics lab here, we have an incredible art room, you know, with ceramics. So it's like looking at what resources, you, resources you had, that you can maybe offer to other schools in the district and get to look together and make a collaborative. And we already belong to the Asabet Collaborative, so that's maybe something that could be looked into in that avenue. The classes happened three to five PM, six to eight PM, and on Saturdays, to try to serve, you know, athletes could still do them on Saturdays or even six to eight, depending on the season. They offer three courses per semester, it really engaged the kids on IEPs, on autism spectrum, to get more hands-on, creative, and creating things. And aside, there was a Job Corps table outside as well, and, and they mentioned that Job Corps is a hundred and twenty different sites, and it's a postgraduate program, but they mentioned there's dual enrollment for senior year, which is really intriguing, I, I wanted to try to look more into that. But you can graduate with a skill, you live on campus, they have social workers, it's an amazing supportive program for kids that college is not for them. So that is also, I'll give this to you guys, but it, it was a really exciting program too. Sorry, if you can't understand me, oops. Oh, it didn't bring it up, all right. Sorry. Sorry. I just wanted to fly through the pictures of their. There, okay, sorry, too many windows open. So this was the presentation they gave, they have a lot of support. You guys, again, can look at some of this information. Anyone that's tech savvy, know how to get out of here? Or, I mean, there is, that is a link, so I don't know how I can open that within the presentation, I apologize, thanks.
I see, you're going to have to end the slideshow and then drag it over. You can't bring anything over.
All right, thank you. Kind of a big statistic is that they had, they did a pre-survey, that thirty percent were giving, like, minimum effort in school, were engaging in school, and then at the end of the survey, up to sixty percent of the kids were engaging in class. So not only were they engaged in this material after school, but then they were more engaged to learn during the, the school hours. So just some of the pictures, some of the schools, and then these weren't tech schools, but some had materials to do welding and different science projects. They also had nursing tables, culinary, carpentry, they had virtual welding, and, and the mom was a school committee member, was also speaking on this panel, and this was her child, really, he was on, on the spectrum, and just became really engaged and enthusiastic, and really came out of the shell, so to speak. So it's really, you know, in terms of equity, kids can feel more comfortable, feel like they're excelling at something, and then be more participating during the day in their regular classes. But it was just a really exciting program, and there's grants available, so it's just very exciting thing. I'd say that more than once.
It was very moving, the, that mom, you know, she had a tear in her eye, we all had a tear in our eye, just in the difference it made for those kids that felt so kind of limited in the academic classes.
So we talked at length of this on Friday, so this is, stay on your message, strategic plan at the forefront, but there was a lot of great material on how to engage the public and get our message out, like the three-year plan, not even staff knows about that. So really trying to get the video of when you did your spiel, like, not, you know, a year ago fall.
Right, so this, it was really about communication, and they talked about the strategic plan, but it could be about anything, and I don't really know how much we're communicating with our community, but they, they were suggesting that we do it, that we invest in it dollar for dollar with policy, and it's not really like PR, it's more like community engagement and building pride in the school and getting parents excited and, you know, the, the larger community excited can probably help with budget, the whole budget process, if everybody's just really psyched about what we're doing in the school. And this is, you know, it goes along with, with Carol's district improvement goal, with the community engagement, you know, and I know you're going to a lot of events and things, but this could be an extension of that even. They, they just talked about some of our modes of communication, like the website, and how we can make it more interactive, more visually appealing, more intuitive, it has to be ADA compliant, mobile friendly, and, you know, just having more interactions, like, you know, the accordions with the FAQs and things like that, just to make it more fun, have really great pictures. Social media, they suggested that we're communicating throughout the year about our progress, what we're working on, initiatives, shout-outs to teachers and students, of course, having permission for all of that, just news stories, just all kinds of things that just make people, like, everybody can be informed if they want to be, and excited about what, what we're doing. And they even suggested principals, so if you have, if you do have a strategic plan, you might want to have a nice printout of that and give it to the different stakeholders in the community, and you could even make bookmarks, you know, have a QR code on it, I thought that was kind of a cool idea. But, but basically, they were just emphasizing the need for communication, and I was wondering if, do we have like a communications person on the school committee, or?
So this is for school committee, not the district?
It's kind of both, so it's really both.
Well, it's very separate, because the district maintains and controls their own webpage, and the school committee has absolutely nothing to do with it, right?
Yeah, so we, we mentioned like Carol's newsletter.
Yeah, we have a, a page on their page, but like, John's controlling his school, Sydney's controlling her school, Lisa has to handle, we don't have any control over what they're putting on their site, the pictures they're posting, like, we don't have any access to that, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking like Carol's newsletter and the principal's newsletters, that, like, are those going out to the general public and, and sending them maybe to the town, or posting them to the, the Boylston Neighbors Connect or whatever, to engage? And so like, for the link, there's a lot of parents, but maybe the E S's parents are burned out, and we can get wire community members to come and do nature or science or, if we outreach to them, and so that is some of the thinking.
Good point.
Yeah, it was pretty exciting. So we could do probably a lot with that, if we want to. Okay. Okay, so this was another really great talk, and it was about how to navigate polarizing debates, and, you know, we're in a very polarized society right now, our schools are getting hit with all of these topics as well. One thing that really hit me in this talk was that the teachers are really affected by it, and so much so that they self-limit what they talk about with their students, and that was just in a survey that was done through that organization. But the Massachusetts law requires that multiple perspectives are taught, and, but teachers are afraid to say things that are controversial, so they just don't know if they're going to have this support. So, so this, in this workshop, they suggested that we do have training for teachers on what the topics are, how to handle it, what they can say, maybe what they shouldn't say, just so everybody's on the same page and everybody feels supported, and the teachers don't feel like they're out there alone, and that they'll be attacked. They, they also suggested, and I love these ideas, that we have a monthly community conversation events scheduled throughout the school year, where we can invite the community in, have a certain topic, maybe have it facilitated by somebody that's, you know, like a separate organization, like maybe like Braver Angels, you know, somebody like that, and where the, you know, parents, community members can interface with the school, we can really get, you know, just work through some of these topics that are so divisive. We could also have listening hours, what they call, and that could be at a local community center, like at Nineteen Carter, like we've talked about before. We could bring Braver Angels into the school, you know, to have different talks as well. And they also suggested things like surveys, polls, and just being out in the community, like Carol was definitely doing. And also, after any events like this, that we share what we learned with, with the rest of the community, so that everybody who spoke feels heard, understood, and then the rest of the community is informed as well. And then they, they touched upon when you are in a polarizing debate, so like, when somebody comes up to you, starts yelling, shouting, this happens a lot on social media, as we know, they actually recommended that you don't engage on social media, because once you reply to one comment, you're, you're on the hook to reply to all of them, and usually those conversations don't actually make any progress. And that's why they emphasized more of these face-to-face opportunities and being out there, making yourself available for face-to-face conversations. And they said, you know, if somebody comes up to you and you're out in public, one of the best ways to start your response is just to refer back to core values, and that what your core values are, what the school's core values are, and it's just a very centering, positive way to start the discussion. They also suggested, and this is for everybody, if anybody's watching in the community too, that we focus on the issues and not the players, so we're not attacking each other, you know, we're talking about the issues themselves. Also, to not be dismissive of opposing viewpoints, you know, diversity in thought is important. And I think that was it, yeah, and just the social media, that it's just not the best platform.
I'm just, sorry, my notes are on the. So, the next talk kind of, kind of continued topic from what Lisa went to, it was an all-conference presentation called Transformer Relationships, and, and she, she had this, I don't know, you can't see that very well, huh? Scarf threat, so C, S-C-A-R-F. And so they do stand for certain things, so the first one is status. So when there's change, it's not the change they're afraid of, it's, it's being left behind, and so with status, it's your relative importance with others. And so, you know, it's make clear that it's not your status that's being changed, it's belonging for everyone. My apologies.
And is it clear that these are, these are people that might be questioning initiatives, like for diversity, equity, and inclusion? She was, the speaker was talking about, like, these might be some of the concerns that people have.
Yeah, and, and to take, take, like, this is maybe why they're reacting the way they are.
Right, exactly, like they have legitimate, you know, life experiences and concerns that make them, you know, scared, and these are ways to communicate with them.
Yeah, so the status, like, we're not going to, you know, you're not going to get canceled, no one's going to get fired, and, and that they feel listened to. The certainty, you know, the ability to predict the future, so knowing what the next move is, that you crave data not being left out of what the plan is, because it is very frustrating not to know details. Certainly when I wasn't part of this committee, I felt very frustrated that things were getting talked about, and I felt detail weren't being shared to follow along, and, and, you know, it's that fear of the unknown. And then autonomy, the sense of control over events. Again, that all opinions matter, no one's going to be discounted, and that in disagreement that we grow, and that we all want to be heard, and to do it with me, not at me. Then relatedness, the sense of safety with others, that sometimes people feel, you know, it's the smaller group being comfortable within the bigger group, but then also the bigger group being comfortable within the smaller group. And that it's about the kids, it's about humanity, it's not about certain groups or, or identities. And the last one's fairness, so to manage expectations, that we all need time to process change, and that it's, it's important to recognize that change takes time. But it, it was really a fascinating talk. If you ever get a chance to hear Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson talk, she was a very dynamic speaker, and I guess Carol had heard her at another venue as well. One thing that came out of that talk as well is that when you start with diversity, it takes like four to five years to see the belonging and the inclusion come out into MCAS scores. So I thought that was a really interesting thing, that even like the funding and the, you know, the, the MCAS scores, it takes time to see those things come to fruition and come out in the MCAS scores. So, and that, that is data supported by a Harvard researcher as well. This next one is interest-based bargaining, so we are going to be bargaining, I think, the summer of twenty twenty-five, Carol was saying, and I guess the E S had done this before, Carol was saying, when she was part of that committee. And the basic principles are separating the people from the problems, focusing on the interests, not positions, and that your partner is coming to a solution rather than them versus us. It is a five to six hour training, but it sound like the people that go through with this training and the process, it's a very satisfying and productive experience when the bargaining happens. We both went to this presentation, so it's culturally responsible social studies, so it was Medway that piloted this program. And so I really liked it, because it was a critical thinking, so the piece of paper that they handed out was, was this, and it was an article about this person, and she ended up running the Gazette, and it looked, it talked about some of her background and her religion, and then it said, it, it made you look at and ask you these things, and how would that frame her experience in life? And so I think it's really a critical skill for our kids to assess a source of information, and to be able to, you know, go out and look at the internet, like, not all the internet sources are the same, and, and so it was really an interesting curriculum that DESI has, it's a pre-curriculum, and the goal is to live local, think globally, and act ethically.
And it seemed to really bring the history alive, you know, because you're looking at it through the eyes of these historical figures. And it seemed to really bring the history alive, you know, because you're looking at it through the eyes of these historical figures.
Yeah, and we were talking about historical fiction and how that again brings it to life and and makes makes a different perspective real to to kids. So this is a lunchtime talk. You know, artificial intelligence, teachers are starting to flip the curriculum, read at home, and then come write the essay in school.
To prevent cheating.
To prevent cheating. The G P T detectors aren't really useful to detect when they're using, you know, the whatever G bot. And but to also make room for some experimentation, like how could it benefit us? This is something that is now gonna be in our lives. So, um, software designers now are using A I alongside them to develop software. So we have to kind of think about incorporating it as well. There was a lot of slides for this one. Kind of the big takeaways, there were two different talks on legal issues and different cases that are ongoing. And they were M A S S, M A S C, legal advisors, and actually a colleague of Kim's was there. And so one of the takeaways is they really encourage us to have a written policy about Facebook page to be very clear about who controls it, what's posted, and and if responses are are done. And then there's different forms within the school and in the school that the school can limit your First Amendment rights when it crosses the line of violating someone else's civil rights, which I thought was interesting. And right now in the First Circuit Court, Massachusetts so far has upheld that schools are prior to teach certain subjects, no matter what. One of the last ones I went to was communication styles and Jim Hardy, I guess, is retiring soon. But he assessed, you know, a series of questions of what your communication styles are and he comes to school committees and tells you, you know, does a whole questionnaire and tells you what your communication style is and how they can work together and how they're important to have opposing styles. But that if everyone's kind of like on one side of the grid, it was a, you know, X and Y, if everyone's on one side of one of those lines, that sometimes you can come across challenges. And so we had a bunch of different books, Working with Difficult People, Dealing with People You Can't Stand, Coaching with Difficult People, and I Hate People, which I thought was funny. But just so many resources there. And like I said, if you want more details, there's a ton in the drive. There's a two-hour meeting you can watch from Friday. But I really encourage you to think about going to the conference in the future. It was really interesting to hear what else is going on in the state and different DESI and and other resources.
And obviously we can't do it justice with a ten-minute little presentation.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it. That did remind me, I did forget one thing, speaking of the Facebook page. Usually the chair controls our Facebook page. It's just how we've done things in the past. I'm actually gonna delegate that to our district secretary, which is Laurie Hart. So if anyone has an issue with that, please let me know. But pretty much all Laurie will be posting on our Facebook page will be agendas and factual information that we've already discussed in meetings. So she's just taking it off my plate, so it's one less thing I have to handle. And for that, I'm greatly appreciative. Okay. All right, did anyone have questions for Jess and Lisa?
Yeah, the Blackstone Collaborative that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Can you just say a little bit more about that, like who's involved? How, is that something you're asking us to start or?
It's an idea, right? So we're thinking, how do we keep the students that are finding they need to go to Ask Bit? And so it's a way to offer them, you know, there's only so many minutes in the day. It's a way to offer them kind of these different hands-on classes and that they can experience different things. And maybe, do I want to do that in the future? No, I don't really want to do that in the future. But find out now before they go off to college or or whatever trade they might think of. So it's something to investigate. We belong to the Ask Bit Collaborative and so, you know, just trying to think of like what our resources are and then reach out to other schools to see if that's something they make the interest in.
I know there was a parent who was interested in trying to restart the STEM PAC. It's not quite the same as this, but they might be interested in working on that with you, I don't know.
That's a great project for your subcommittee. Actually, there was a lot of things in your presentation. I was thinking that you guys maybe could pull and then what you can do is bring your ideas to the committee or bring them to Carol, obviously first, and see how she feels about it, if it's doable in the district. But that's a great task, you know, for them to do the research and the lead work ahead of time at their subcommittee meeting and discuss and see, you know, what needs to be done. The cost, obviously, is gonna be a huge thing and then it would have to be brought to the committee and.
Yeah, the grants.
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Two quick things. One is the conversation on Friday that we want to put all of my newsletters and this should go to the towns and that's something we all need to start doing. So even that is a simple way of landscape, even the Facebook page. And number two, the strategic plan. All these are great resources. We don't have a whole, we have to decide which ones are more to our business. But they're great to know who we can contact, what we need to. One of the key ones I think you talked about is the strategic plan. I know I keep beating the drum on this, but it ties into the work of the children graduate. The collective area of the 21 stakeholders who are involved in that discussion, putting that together. The next step is to develop a strategic plan. That's the piece. Peter spoke about it earlier. I I can't be responsible for what happened in the past, but going forward, involving these individuals, all of the strategic plan is our next step today. And I think we can pull a lot of these, these are the direction we want to go. So since going in, I'm trying to avoid is, this is my idea and that's your idea. We're in all over the place and what is our collective vision for our children? We have to decide where to crossroads right now about that. We have new, we heard, whole different profile coming into the high school, all of the schools. Who are these children coming in and what do they need to succeed? We talked to alumni last time. Next time, we're gonna be talking to admissions counselors, to the colleges, to get feedback, and then we're gonna start to put this together. The next step next year is starting to go on that strategic plan. We're finishing up that district improvement plan with a concrete plan, a lot of things we needed and we did need them. To that point, the math teacher is among those, right on there. And there's, each thing presents its own kind of separate issues. We're finishing up that last year, next year, that ties in perfectly with the timing to launch that strategic plan going forward. It just makes sense because it's systemic and it involves a collective body of stakeholders, all different groups. So thank you to Jessica for for capturing all this. I am in awe of that. I go to these conferences all the time. So I hear all of this and the body of me one communicating that. But when we can sit and talk about them, right, and I can share that, it's a tremendous help.
Yeah, it's good. It's great. It was a great conference.
Thanks, Laurie.
Okay, Laurie, you have two minutes to do your superintendent.
Yeah, so for policy, there are two policies that we're voting on. Those were the first reads last time. There are seven ones that are, the seven that are in the drive that are first reads this time. We went over it, like Carol and I, and M A S C suggested changes and we agreed with all of them. So that's an easy reading. You can see the differences. I made sure that I put them in there so you can see the old policy, the new policy, where the changes are. So those are in the drive for you. For superintendent evaluation update, in the drive, you'll see we have the, Jess and I updated the new evaluation model as well as the rubric to reflect Carol's goals. I'm not gonna hand it up, I'm not gonna go over it, but it's in there if you wanna take a look at it. We'll be presenting it in January. We had discussed originally having an M A S C come in, do a workshop with us, train us on superintendent evaluation. There's too much on our budget. We found online at M A S C, and I will send you a link. There's a webinar if you want to watch it, you can, and you can watch it on your own time. And there's also, Ms. Costello has created a folder in the school committee drive entitled Superintendent's Gold F Y I. At goals, F Y I, it's gold too, evidence. Unlike past years where we were given this all like at the update stage. Carol's putting things in as she makes progress, which I think is really helpful. So please try to check in on that every now and then. It'll make the evaluation at the end of the year a lot easier.
Thank you. That's awesome. And side note to piggyback off of that, speaking of Carol's goals, we actually, a little business item, we actually did not vote on them. We discussed them. She's been moving forward with them as a formality. We never voted. So tonight, it's just a formality. Yep, we didn't. We went back and voted.
No, we did. We checked, yeah. We agreed. We just started to vote.
We agreed on it and I don't, I think because we were supposed to vote the following meeting and then it just never made it on the agenda. But we did review the goals, so we are gonna vote on those tonight.
And they're lovely little folders that Carol was tucking in.
Exactly. We're already almost at the mid-year point, so, um, so we will vote on that. But if if anyone has any questions on that now, Laurie or Jess might be the person because they've been working on that. Were there any questions on Carol's goals?
It will be color-coded. Carol was really great. She put in each standard and how it related to us. It's just, it's just, it's phenomenal. But when I present it next time, it won't be a very long presentation when Jess and I present it, you'll be able to see that it's just, it's gonna be really, she's laid it all out for us that we can honestly just look at the work and then write it and not have to pull and go do our own investigation.
Thank you for the compliment. That is what it's supposed to look like.
Oh, my goodness. It's tremendous.
They know that. They all do that.
We just haven't seen that.
Okay, no, I just, you know.
Like I thought angels were saying.
Beautiful.
See them a lot. All right, Carol, what do you need? Five, 10 minutes?
Well, I don't know. I'm gonna start with the easy stuff first. We do have the date for the School Resource Office forum for Boylston. That's gonna be, that's on, my day, January 27th, 5 to 7. I'm stretching. Megan and I are meeting with the board of selectmen and John Anunziata, April 4th. I think that's it, on Thursday, to set up what we're gonna be talking about. So the forum was obviously gonna be publicized across the town in Boylston. And it's a question and answer period for folks. We just wanna make sure we we have what we think folks would want to know about during that time. So that's the School Resource Office Forum for Town of Boylston individuals.
Was the Berlin PD invited today?
I haven't, I haven't invited anybody yet.
Oh, Julie, this is confusing because you didn't come to that, attend that select for me. In Boylston, they specifically asked to hold a town forum to see if the town is vested. That was a Boylston Board of Select, uh, Select Board ask in Berlin because, so the S R O would be based on, it would be a Boylston police officer for Tondo. And it would.
No, I know that, but they work in partnership. That's just why I'm asking, just to leave.
This is just to decide if how the town feels if they even, if the select board will even approve it, because we can't do anything until they approve it. So once the town approves that, then we need to loop Berlin in. So that that's the same select for me, I believe Mike was there. I believe Mary Porter from Berlin came and she expressed that she was not.
She said the schools took out money last year, so there's no money left over for any other.
She did not see a need for Berlin to have an S R O. This would be something that would be funded through the police. So that would be a Berlin thing if they want something specific for Berlin Memorial.
There's also a Tondo piece for Berlin.
Well, the way it works is it would be a Boylston police officer that would build the district and then the district would have to allocate part of that expense to Berlin.
Right.
But the.
That would be the alternative.
But so Berlin P D is not gonna have any, should be in collaboration, but this is, this employee would be working for John Anunziata.
No, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, he's in S R O. I'm just saying, just to keep Berlin, if it is a community forum, I would just say out of courtesy to the Berlin P D that they're aware.
Pay for it or being asked to pay for it.
We can absolutely invite them to the forum, yeah, unfortunately. You know what I'm saying? The decision-making is gonna, John is hiring the person, John is supervising the person because it's in the town of Boylston.
So how would it work if Boylston goes ahead with it? And we have a Tondo, you know, that Berlin should be paying, but you haven't asked Berlin yet.
That's one of the conversations I did well.
Well, that's gonna be in the budget. It'll have to be, we'll have to decide, it'll be an ask in the budget. So it's gonna end up going on town floor and whether it's approved or not, but that's gonna be something that would be in the budget. So it's not really asking Berlin, it's putting it in the budget.
So Boylston, so Boylston, Tondo wouldn't, wouldn't be there because it would be covered by the town. But the Berlin department, Tondo wouldn't.
Say that again, sorry.
You're saying, you're saying it's different between the two, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Both go in the budget.
They both go in the budget. This forum though is deciding, is determining if the town of Boylston. I get what you're saying.
Wouldn't that be the discretion?
It's if the police, it's if the police want to actually hire an S R O. It's if we have to.
So also the police side, it doesn't, the school side.
This meeting that we're having and the same thing for the forum, because the select board in Boylston has to approve. You were at that meeting, right? It was kind of confusing. The select board has to approve the police to hire an S R O.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the school. That's the select board and police in the town of Boylston because Tondo sits in the town of Boylston.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna add to a little bit. My understanding was, I don't think the percentage bring out was, it's definite. Say it's 60, 40, 60 to the school, 40 to the the town of Boylston.
Boylston, yes.
They'll pay the percentage.
And then that's 60% of the split of the Boylston.
In our budget from Tondo, yes. And then on the police side, there, you know, there's other expenses, there's health inspection, benefits, vehicle, all that.
Uniform, yeah, we talked about that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they still work with the Boylston police outside of school time.
Yeah, exactly. So that's why this is a Boylston thing for now. And then, yes, Julie will absolutely, we'll like invite them to the forum, but it's a Boylston Select Board slash P D decision.
Yeah, you might want to, very much.
Just the curve.
Yeah, I will.
We'll invite them. We'll see you tomorrow. We'll invite them.
Yep.
The other, the next thing, community outreach, I'm just, as I'm out there in our community, P G O meetings, I'm tomorrow. Tomorrow, I'm a finance company. I'm out there with our people, but I wanna get out more to the general population, the general community members. I wrote a list down of places that I wanna get to. Jessica sent me one that was great today. I did, I was at Nineteen Carter, not to push the budget. I just wanted to tell them what we're putting through doing at the schools and hear what their concerns are, hear their questions. So I'm kicking up the coffee chat. I'll send the date in the next couple of days. Out of what I'm planning, as I set these up, the libraries and the different areas. The other thing we talked about doing, and I wanted to, maybe Megan and I can work on, is making sure we hit the meetings, the finance meetings, so forth, having to be at all of, so everybody knows where they're gonna be on different sites or can be. Because I think it's important based on our most presentation that we showed to the table. So we'll get those too. Maybe you might can look on that.
Yeah, we see like a sign-up sheet. I think we had a sign-up sheet last year. Yeah, we'll stick something in the drive and if everyone can, you know, tackle.
So there's, we just wanted to bring everybody involved, get everybody involved in that, so we got what we need to be. Last thing, so this is a bigger topic and I think it's gonna roll into a lot of, Julie and Megan and I have talked about and speaks to the policy. I, let me just say, come on. As we approve facilities used, they come to me and I sign them. In this case, they came through, officially to Tondo, and I said, well, we have to have a custodian. They have custodians, right? Tondo has had that, or Boylston. So when I came to try to sign Berlin, might we need a custodian in there? That's what the policy says. So I happened to be sitting with Megan and I said, I need to call Julie, the Department of the Red Department, and tell her this. So she went, okay, and then she went, and then I called Julie. And that was, that was a shock and it didn't go over well. I am responsible for the policies of the school committee. Anyone who are not following, it's important you tell me about. I need to look into, we need to change and that's what our work is and upholding them. Now I'm caught between a rock and a hard place because, as we talked about a few minutes ago, it never was followed in Berlin. It just never was with everything. It just sort of, I don't know what happened. It just never was. Now I'm sitting here and I'm like, I need to follow the policy. And then we go back and forth. I'm like, but it's your policy. I know what to tell you. If I don't, you can fire me. If I, I'll release it, I'll follow this policy. You have the right and flag me. I mean, I'm being supportive, not following the policy. I mean, I'm being supportive, not following the policy, that's a little unnerving. So, not only that, and that's the least of what I worry about, I think. I'm worried about the safety and security of our children. I'm worried, I'm, I'm constantly on this. This is my biggest initiative, it's why we have that crisis team from years ago. I started that crisis team, so we could come together as teams and protect those children while they're in the school day. I think we've done an excellent job of that. I never wanna turn around and say, oh my god, we didn't do something, we chose not to, or for whatever reason, and something happens. I could not live with myself for that, for not doing everything we possibly can. And that's why we have to have all these people involved in that conversation during the school day. Now we run into, I think, this, the better part of it, and I think it's a gift in a way, although it's been very unsettled, I don't know how to describe it.
Expensive?
Expensive, all kinds of extensive, extensive or expensive. And, and I know, it raises all kinds of things, of looking at the security of our buildings beyond the school day. And so we, one thing, the Berlin piece brings up having a custodian in there. I do think it's important. Things happen during that time, when, when these games are picking off, or whatever it is. It doesn't even have to be games, it could be other reasons, a building is rented, we have that one, other people from other places rent our space, right, and so especially, my biggest concern, because Boylston and Berlin are very contained. When they come into the rec programs, that whole, there's only a small section that they can be in. And that can be controlled. Tonto is my bigger concern. Look, we're sitting here now, the door's not locked.
Yeah.
Who knows who's locked? I, I don't need to scare people, I'm just trying to elevate how we can protect everybody who's involved. It's a crazy, the things are going on. We get reports about things going on in Commonwealth, they got it on here, but they're happening. They're happening, she, we get phone calls, you get phone calls, things, right, when you're in chair, things happen. And will happen. Are they gonna happen here, I don't know. But, but let us take care of things the best we can. Some of it may be an inconvenience as we go forward, but then some of it will just become habit. I don't wanna make this decision in a vacuum. I want input from people who, who have a stake in the game. That's why in my report, basically, I'm saying, please, let's form an ad hoc committee, and look at the safety and security of each of our buildings. What do we wanna do going forward? When do we wanna lock the doors? In the afternoon. Folks come in and out of here in the afternoon. I, I tried to start it, and then I stopped the admin team, and I said, let's look at this after the holidays. Let's, we have to set out communication, if people can't show up at the door, then we lock the door the next day. Otherwise, everybody's going, why is the door locked? It's not what we've done in the past. But if that's what we collectively feel like we need to do, my god, let's do it. I mean, let's, let's take care of these things. I don't wanna be by myself in these decisions. Right now, what I can uphold is your policy, and I think we worked out a reasonable decision around this for Berlin for this year going forward. I, I, I think, I think we have a number, Julie's can speak to that, so.
Just gonna say, that's a perfect segue, because I don't know, do you wanna comment on that, Julie?
The, which part of that?
That we've worked out a solution.
I know, I, I've heard what Julie's thinking.
The locked doors, wanna talk about that?
Yeah, so what is the concern? So what, there was, people found in a school, they somehow got in, they weren't supposed to be there. The, the concern is what, they're, they're gonna hide out overnight until school come the next day? Do something, plant something, came to join, whatever it is?
Yes.
That's what, that came on the news.
Amongst, that was one, that's one incident, but there are other things that have happened through the years in schools after hours. I mean, I don't like, I don't like scare people, but I'm just, I'm just trying to say, let's be proactive about.
Anyone could get, walk in right now, like go hide in one of the classrooms and be here, or like plant something, and-
So we talked in the beginning, yeah, about how clever it is to have the key cards, you know, we did the additional cameras and the vest rules, or everything, put those in. We talked about the side door here, that kids are coming and going without any-
Anyone, sorry, is anyone monitoring the cameras like overnight, or when people aren't in, like, is anyone actually monitoring those cameras?
So having the doors open at night, just sort of throws that off.
Yeah, that's exactly what she's saying.
How, what do you mean, how do they open it?
Having the doors open, right now, having these doors open.
Or like on a weekend?
Where was all that work you do during the day for extra security, muzzing people in? Secretaries are moving their desk, they can see out the window, cleaning up the trees in front of BES, so they can actually see out the window again? Having it open for rec, or any event, that was, yeah, kills a lot of hair.
And also, and that's why I'm asking, once we figure out what we can do better around this, you have a lot of, what we talk, you have a piece on the board.
This is just, this is why this wasn't like a specific agenda item, I asked Carol to talk about her, we haven't, this just came up like a week ago, so I think there's two separate things here. Julie's gonna talk about her piece about the cops for the custodian, that's something different that we can vote on tonight, and hopefully find some type of resolution for. This thing, I think we need to have-
It's getting shorter, but there was a few weeks ago, kids show up on Thanksgiving for basketball, and doors are locked.
Yes.
Nobody knew what was going on.
It was a mistake.
I was getting questions, what if that was what I had?
They, I think it was a misunderstanding, because Carol, that's when she initially got some communication, and she had communicated with some of the administrators, and I think there was confusion amongst all of us.
Yeah, and that's when Dan, who's here, or Julie and me, and we worked out the schedule concerns, and, and tried to fix that, those schedules, it's all new to, to us.
Yeah, so I guess my suggestion would be to have a group, maybe another subcommittee, that works with the police departments.
Yeah, put a list of people, and then do a list of-
It was in my computer guide, it was in Carol's report, but, I mean, you gotta work with the towns.
It'd be interesting to know what other schools do.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that would be part of our work, right? I think that's safer than using schools.
I, I think that's the other thing, is I think Julie's already in that one.
The reality is like-
Well, this committee could put it out there, we could go on the listserv and ask what other schools do. We can see what other schools say they do, and that's the other thing. What you say you're gonna do, and what actually happens in real life, sometimes they're two different things.
Right.
Yeah, like, I had those propped up in three hours there.
Right.
Now, we talked, I mean, we talked about that too, because my, my, my position when that is, okay, some district, I voted super candid, because I ask, what do you do, they tell me things, maybe it doesn't happen, reality, that's not what we care. And that they don't do, that's their problem, it's not our problem. They wanna do what we wanna do, amongst us, for us. So I used to ask other people, so we can figure out strategies, how'd you go about doing this? How'd you get these people, great to gather information from them, but what they do, what we do, I don't have to do what they're doing.
I just think it's really common for the students. I just think it's funny, for the students, like, this is their school. They can't enter their school after hours because it's locked, that creates a power.
That's what this comes, that's what this, how there be student IDs to get them in the door, that then tracks with them in school. But that's, that's a bigger, yeah.
Yeah, it's a huge, a huge conversation. The student IDs, the students, are they really responsible enough to be responsible for being able to open a building? Like, no, they're gonna like lose their ID on the sideboards, something, and stuff.
Part of life, you gotta do their work. Training, training.
Valid.
Have IDs.
I guess if you lose your ID, yeah, right, so I think that, these are all good things that we need to talk about.
They would lose their driver's license.
I don't know, I don't know, I guess our knowledge- These are, but these are all ideas to bring to the table, I think that's-
I think we need to, it needs to be a bigger discussion, though, it's not, we're definitely, it's eight-thirty, we're not gonna solve this, so I think maybe when Carol and I meet, you guys think about, like, who's interested in being involved in this and, and doing it? I know Jessica, you've done so much, so I don't wanna put anything else on you, because she just took off, uh, planning the master steering plan for me, and she's unfortunate for graduate, so, you know, I mean, I don't know who's interested, Lisa, Mike, or Laurie, or Julie, I don't, yeah, so I mean, like-
I'd love to have them, Dan, to give the crystal, to keep them.
Obviously, yes, absolutely, like Nancy and Dan, that's, that goes without saying, yeah, that's absolutely your realm. So I think, our one week chat, you guys think about who might be interested in sitting on this committee. You guys also have to have a say, you know, programming goes on the weekends, and it's your building. So I, I just feel like this is a huge conversation, and then the last part of this, we want to kind of decide what we wanna do. Then when we kick it back to policy, you guys have to take a stab at that. And then it comes back to the committee, I don't foresee this being done this school year. I foresee this as something that we would initiate for the next school year, hopefully, you know, being voted on by, by Mayor June.
So what's the security in the interim with this FBI directive?
Status quo.
Status quo, as it was.
We didn't make any changes, because we haven't voted, that would have to be a pol, change of policy.
You don't have to vote or do a policy to put in security appeals.
That's what I said to my admin team, I wanted to go forward and do a communication to, to the public after the holidays, that we need to sit down and work out, how is this gonna look?
I don't know, why don't you just reach out to the police chiefs and get there anyway?
They, I, I have not yet, well, I talk to them all the time, I'm sure I know what they would say, you're right. That we have to notify, if we choose to do that, and the lockdown is after hours, more. It's been really difficult for me to consider that, because there's, there's a, there are, there's significant public feedback on that.
That's gonna create huge, especially in this-
Maybe so, panther janitor, you just pay for a-
Security guard, is what we talked about, but a security guard, so we had talked about, that was something we talked about, building a security guard into the budget, but you would need that person to be here not every night, and then weekends. So you're talking forty miles an hour.
I mean, we're asking costs, honestly, we're group, it's here, like.
So forty miles an hour.
I don't know, you're working at a high school, you're paying for it, right?
That's a big pound of hours.
You have some taxation concessions and ticket, tickets, right?
Right, yep.
Right, yeah.
Put them at the front door, so.
And where we can, we can, we can, we strip access to different areas by ensuring that these doors, so the corridors are locked, there are only one doors open there, that's monitored there, that we have something going across there, and Nancy and I have talked about something that will go across the stairwell.
Yeah, the point is, Carol, it's, the committee doesn't have to wait to plan a meeting, to plan the next meeting, to inform a committee, to have a meeting, to plan the security protocol. If it's a security thing, you've had it for three weeks now, you can make changes to security. Nobody's gonna fault you for making security changes.
But what should she do, you can lock the door?
Long-term, I don't know. You, you work with the crisis team and the police chiefs all the time, I'd start there, but as far as long-term, we can do this, what we're talking about. But immediately, if there's an issue, a current threat, session, whatever you call it, to the point where the FBI needs to send you, and all superintendents, a notice. I don't know, maybe that's just, they send them out every day, it's like candy, I don't know, but if it's rising to that level, and now we're hearing about it, we haven't heard about it in three years, anything like this, I would suspect you have authority to make security changes at the doors.
For this operation, I would know.
But I would, I would just add to that, that it's tricky, Tonto, yes, I mean, these are leased buildings, right? Tonto, yes, I need a superintendent, but BES and BMS, that school locks to these, to the gym spaces. So you say just lock the doors, that is immensely disruptive to these youth programs.
So you're saying, so I don't, with BMS?
Yep.
You come in the side door, you can only go to the, the HVAC room, the bathrooms, the gym. In the gym, you've got the office, you've got the stage. You can't get, is the cafeteria automatically locked? Because there's a entrance to the cafeteria, and then the double door is locked.
BES has a similar setup, where you go in the side door.
Still lock the places someone go in there, right?
Where?
Any.
I don't understand, we speak that.
You know, HVAC room, bathrooms, the closets.
We do, every time, just big building.
What's that?
Because you, you, that's, we do after an open house, you say the-
Ryan, Ryan would do that, I know at BES, before he leaves, so, then, for basketball, at BES.
Yeah, it's eight o'clock at night after he's gone.
No, Mike's there at ten, right, ten?
Right.
What time is, no, Mike, what time does Mike stay at all, nine, seven? Yeah, we, and I think same at Berlin, right, you have custodian there, so.
He's the detective.
I mean, so that sounds like problem solved, then what are we worried about?
Well, it's, the doors are still open, so those two, fine, same as-
But he's the last one leaving, that's when the door is locked, and then-
Yes, that's what we do, that's status quo.
Even taking the, the sports program out of it, we have PTO meetings at night, I think of Berlin, there's a PTO as well out in the library, a late meeting, but the doors open all the way down the hall by the gym, right? That's how they're communicating.
But the custodian is still in the building, so Mike, or whoever the Berlin person is, what, part of their job is to make sure everyone is out, and then sweep through.
No, but even during that time period, do we lock the door locked? That's what I'm saying, and somebody has to be there to arrest people, and who would open it?
Well, you could, no, well, you would move the PTO meeting to the cat.
That's what's happening. Right, but somebody has to run out, open the door.
Not in Boylston, you can't.
Not unlocked.
Oh, I'm hot now.
Not in Boylston.
Oh, well, maybe it's buildings beside it.
We need it unlocked, you know, you just said it's locked.
It is buildings beside it.
No, not at six o'clock, it's unlocked, because then the after-school kids are out, and then the basketball program's in.
So you can still get from the gym into the cafeteria?
No, uh, no, it's locked, but the PTO was in there, and they, it doesn't-
Is it locked, or is it unlocked?
It's completely locked, you cannot get in the school side building. PTO wants to have the meeting in there, they would put someone at the door, the cat door, and make sure nobody exits, I mean, these are not, these are easy fixes. I don't think the answer is locking our community in that space.
You don't, you don't need to plan a meeting that means the whole, I understand.
No, we just have to figure out what we're gonna do with Tonto over the weekends.
Tonto's a tricky one. Well, no, I, I live one, but, yes, I do.
So yeah, and same thing, so yeah, I think Berlin and Boylston, but now, you know, if you don't have a custodian, so in Boylston, the gym is only open for three hours on Saturdays, correct Cindy? And then the building is locked, and nobody's in there the rest of the weekend.
Correct.
So fine, Ryan is there those three hours, the custodian in Boylston is there for those three hours on Saturday. He's responsible for checking the school, there's no issues at Boylston Elementary. And there is no need for that gym any further than those three hours, because Boylston has Hillside, which their rec basketball uses as another facility to practice.
But he also shouldn't even be on the school side.
Who?
Right.
Well, he's not, it's fine.
That's what I'm saying, you said check the school, he should either-
So you can get from the, you cannot get from the BES gym to the school?
No, there's a door that's locked, that they keep locked. So it's a bathroom, a very little hallway, and then the gymnasium. They also have a stage and all that, there's closets and whatever, but it's-
Sounds like it's a solution.
For that, the issue is Tonto.
Okay.
So what do we do with Tonto? Do you keep the door, like, again, it's a high school, so on the weekends, are people in here? Probably, all right, Lisa? So, I mean, there's-
Practices, there's practices.
Practices, not only that, you rent it out to multiple places, I know we had a dance recital here, I mean, it was, people were all over the place. So, I mean, there needs to be a policy moving forward. What is the policy? Are the doors always going to remain locked? And when, do you need to purchase a security guard if you're gonna have a recital here? Do you have to have the doors locked and have a security guard? Or are you allowed to have the doors unlocked, and it's free roaming in the school, you can get anywhere? And then, or does somebody have to sweep the school after, I don't know.
I don't know, so here's my question, who do you move the security guard? I'm coming here to watch the basketball game, right? And then I go in the gym, and I come right out, and I go up the stairs.
Well, if the door is locked, then people are gonna complain, no, what I'm saying, what I'm saying.
They're waiting for, they're, they're, they can't lock anything from going up the stairs.
Right.
Yeah, what's your, that front door, you're like-
So you need to have the security guard let somebody in.
Yeah, they don't know, right, exactly.
So we're trying to control society here. I don't know that-
I feel like maybe it's worth a meeting with the police chiefs, Mike, right, the crisis team? So maybe Carol, you and I should talk to them, maybe at the next crisis meeting, we can bring this up, and just say, what do you recommend? And maybe we don't need to make this more into what, but it needs to be a reasonable solution. We can't just be, okay, we're just gonna have the doors locked all weekend at Tonto.
The only other way is to have all these double doors, all the links, they're getting into always closed at weekend. The only way to get through is with the key or badge, with the double doors.
Is there a swipe thing at every double door?
Yeah.
Oh, there is.
The only way, they just go find into this area.
Every hall they have one?
Yeah.
Oh, there, oh, I didn't know that.
Even if they, 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 they're still in this section.
Oh, there it is.
Thank you, Dan.
Except for the upstairs getting upstairs.
They still get upstairs, but this door will-
They're just in the corridor. They're just in the corridor.
They just stay in this, well, flash room to eight o'clock as well.
They can't get through.
They won't be able to get upstairs.
They won't be able to get through.
There's no.
There's no classroom before the double.
Yeah.
It's just the aisle.
Is the aisle.
Well, the hall, the library is that.
Yeah.
The classroom is locked.
Even the library.
Auditorium.
You need this to get into the library.
Yeah.
Auditorium is locked. Oh, but that goes back stairs. It's locked. So every door is locked.
Locked.
You just have to be diligent about lock.
It's almost, it's just someone designed it that way.
The spaces just have to be locked. Whose responsibility is that? Custodian?
Custodian.
Custodian?
Yep.
But we leave the door open to the access to the gym, whatever it is, you have, you know.
Gym and the bathrooms. So then you could, so also locked. So this open area will be open and then the custodian needs to do a sweep before he leaves. But you, then you absolutely need a custodian.
Well, then you would need a custodian to just.
And that, that, to be honest with you, the custodian has always been, um, like if there was something on the weekends. So we, there would never have to be a hired custodian during the week because that custodian was on staff until eleven. But on the weekends, because I used to do student council, we always hire a custodian for anything. If if a custodian was not on staff, we have hired one. So that's always been the case for Tohanto. And I think it's because of the nature of the building.
All right, so Carol, let's do that. Let's do that. We'll add that on to our agenda. I know something and I'll bring it back next time.
I'll talk to. Um, for me, like even if I didn't mean I had done, so I can only speak to what I had done.
Yeah, like Saturday practice is on carry since there.
No, because that's an employee of the school. That's a team, correct?
What's that?
An employee of the school, the coach comes in, no, no janitor.
Yeah, they don't need a custodian.
No, they did. Oh, practice.
No, but they come in on, but if you were to dance.
Practice.
I don't understand.
And it should be like.
I'm speaking to you.
I heard, I heard.
Something happened.
What I'm talking about. Talk after him. All right, Julie, give your um quick uh thing and then let's vote on that. So tell the committee what you're asking.
Okay, so currently the policy, the policy requires a janitor on staff for the entirety of the time that anyone is in these buildings. Now, a larger discussion is for our, to maximize facility use, I would propose that these schools go into shared use agreements with the towns so that these gyms especially can be used by your community members, whether it's your basketball programs, it could be the seniors that do cheer volleyball, pickleball, or whatever happens to be, um, that they're able to use these facilities, right? Because in Berlin, we have no rec center. There is no senior center. In Boylston, I know they have limited rec space over there.
Hillside.
Um, yeah, it's just the gym.
It is, yes.
The police academy is upstairs. Um so it's just a gym. So is there a senior center there?
No.
No, so we have to be able to, or we should be, the schools should be supporting community access to these, to these sites, right? Certainly for seniors and youth nonprofit organizations. So I I I'll definitely recluse myself from this vote, but I I do want to make a motion to, on the current policy, I want to, which is file KF, Community Use of School Facilities, I want to strike completely service fees and rental fees for um all youth groups that are registered, five one C threes or nonprofit associations um for the rest of the year and to bring this policy back to policy subcommittee to to bring it back to the policy subcommittee with a better understanding that these nonprofit groups are just that. They're nonprofit groups for the youth in our community.
So you want the school district to pay for the custodian?
So here's the tricky thing, right? These, these groups have been functioning for over ten years without any custodian on site. We've managed the floods of the BMS gym. Berlin Recreation Committee pays for the gym floor. We pay for the basketball hoops. We pay for the maintenance of that facility. So with all due respect, I get that you're trying to uphold a policy, but that building is funded, that gym space maintenance is funded through the Berlin Recreation Committee, not the school. So to come, to present this to us when you already started our program, to me seems like it's in, it just, it just doesn't show good measure or good faith with with that organization. I understand you're upholding the policy. I really do. I I I get that. Um and and so because of that, I, I think we rewrite that policy. But in the meantime, right now, I'd say for BMS and BES, that you strike this, uh, my motion is to strike the service fees and the rental fees for any youth organizations registered.
The service fees in terms of custodians?
Correct.
So no custodians or or.
And and uh uh uh, I'll requalify that. And it will be overseen then by the parks and recreation communities.
But Boylston, that's not the case.
Why? Yes, they pay Ryan on Saturday.
Parks and.
No, boy, they pay rentals. No, the basketball does.
Boylston pays a rental fee.
No, they don't pay. I believe they just pay for.
Same, they just pay the custodian.
The custodian.
As a custodian, they just pay Ryan three hours.
Yeah, they just pay Ryan. Yeah, it's over a thousand dollars.
Okay, I mean, it wasn't that way last year. I mean, I have all the bills.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't know. Last year, they paid a rental fee?
I mean, I don't know if we're talking about the same program.
The Boylston Youth Basketball Program?
CMF Basketball? His name different?
No. That's different.
Boylston West, Boylston Basketball?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they paid a gym usage and custodian last year.
Yeah. Carol, waive that fee this year.
Just waive the fee for anything that involves our children.
Yes, you do. Boylston also pays for the rec facility. They pay for the floor. They pay for the hoops. Yeah, they do the same thing.
For the gym, Boylston pays.
No, 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 no. All right, I'm talking about Hillside.
Hillside, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rec pays for, yeah, yeah.
Boylston, I, right now, as far as I know, that's not happening at boys. And they're not paying for the hoops because we're having some hoop issues, the floor issue.
No, that's all through the school.
I'm talking about the, yeah, Hillside, Boylston. Sorry, that's what I just clarified. Yeah, BES, no. Because, yeah, I understand where hoop issues over there. And the floor and, yeah.
So I think we should keep BES as is and I think it's working. No one's complaining. Ryan is there for three hours. You're comfortable with that. That's always how it's been in Boylston, right?
And they're paying for Ryan as far as I know.
And the only thing that organization is paying for is for Ryan for three hours.
I can't speak to what they're paying for at Hillside. I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, beside, yeah, Hillside.
Because they have two, so the thing is with Boylston, they have two gyms. So they just need the school facilities gym for those three hours because they also have their recreational Hillside Gym. They have two gyms. In Berlin, we have one gym.
Yeah, one of the things we're waiting, we're gonna waive them for everybody.
Well, that's what I would think. I think it has.
You would, but then, do you wanna have a custodian there is the question because you want a custodian there.
Well, so it's just a thing. I don't understand because ever since I've been in this town, I've been told when they built the school, BMS, it was intended to be a shared community space. The community can use it. November, or sorry, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Susan was chairing Berlin's Policy Committee. Jeff was here. I remember having this conversation. The town gets free use of the building, BMS. So are we gonna charge town meeting? We've never charged town meeting before. They use the building. Basketball and whoever else.
We're not charging town meeting. I'm sorry. That's the facilities use, but they don't pay, they do get it free. We don't charge anything.
Right, so.
They, they have a custodian, a custodian is out of duty during that time, so that's not an issue. It's really a day of weekends, like weekends, holidays.
Yeah, weekends, holidays, anytime.
It's custodial fees. So I guess the question is, I'm.
So it's saying, how do I interpret it?
It's.
It says custodial fee. It specifically says custodial fees.
But during or does it specify at hours or?
Says must be present at all times.
Yeah. So they're already there, as Dan said. I think they have a custodian in every building Monday through Friday on business days from like seven to eleven, right?
So. So if, so if the custodian is there for town meeting, which is a weeknight, Monday, seven to whatever, right? Basketball's there on a weeknight, five to whatever. Why are they treated differently?
Yeah.
No, it's not. We're not on weekends.
No. So so the the custodians there, basketball is paid during the week.
So you're not gonna have to pay for the weekdays.
So the weekends, we pay, so we we pay, you know, you know, you've been there nine AM until Saturday night. We use a BMS gym. So that's at thirty-six fifty an hour. That's pricey, right?
Forty, yeah, I would.
Okay, then you use. No, it's ten, ten.
Ten.
On Saturday.
And then Sunday as well, it's used too because that's the gym for the Berlin Youth Basketball Program. For Boylston, they use the Hillside Program. But because they're such a large program.
Yeah, I don't think we can be separating the schools. It's, it's not, whatever we pay in one town, the whole town.
Right.
So I think the, the difference in equity, I'm sorry.
No, you go first.
The, the difference in equity is that, Julie, if I understand correctly, you guys are maintaining that school gym with your money.
Well, I, I think that was part of the conversation with Jeff was, we don't charge, in BMS, it's, it's always different in BMS. It's always different in Berlin.
Yes.
Because it's always been different. That was part of the conversation. So I don't, I don't even know that this applies to the.
That policy? Well, the way it's written, it does.
Hey, the way it's written, it's.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So either, so I guess here's a question. The first question is, how does the committee feel about, first, let's take Berlin. Julie has proposed, let's just let, who has a key? You?
Yeah, I have a key.
So Julie, would there be no custodian on the weekends? Julie Lee is in charge of opening the building and closing the building and sweeping, doing all the stuff in the building and.
That we've done for ten.
So there will be no custodians in the building?
That's what I'm.
Yes, it is a bit confusing, trust me. So that's the question.
As a volunteer, I would like to add.
Yeah, she's not getting paid. So the question is, is the committee comfortable?
As a volunteer.
Yes, I know, we know.
So I don't have to hoard. I don't have to hoard. I've always said that. But let's be square here, ten years of that.
Right, the first bit, I know.
Is the committee advocating for the youth here, the program?
Absolutely.
Yes, I thought we left off discussing this for this year, we were, Berlin, because the custodians are at the minimum of three hours in their contract for any kind of overtime, which is included. Ryan would be covering for Boylston because he earliest paid the three hours. But in Berlin, we've talked about this year going forward, is Berlin would just pay up like that three hours, even if they're there ten hours. The, the, Dan has custodians available to open up when everybody goes and set everything up for them and then come back, lock up, sweep the school. Why I say sweep, sweep that area, make sure everything's safe, clean up the bathrooms because they get heavy usage. Make sure the floors are okay because we start school the next day, a lot of times after that Sunday. So that would be the, the custodian fee would be the three hours. That's where I thought we left off discussing. I didn't think we were.
We did, we did.
I.
Julie is.
I had a change of heart. I'm sorry, Carol.
She just told me that. I didn't know before.
Yeah, I just.
I'm sorry. I had to go back to this.
I didn't have the program and. So I guess my question is, Julie has put her position on the table. Carol's put her position on the table. This is a difficult conversation. I want to know how you as a committee member feel about allowing, let's put Boylston to the side because I think Boylston is working. I get that you said we have to be equitable. But then you're taking away, like Ryan has depended on that income. He's, that's, he's always done that. So say no, Ryan, you don't get those three hours.
But how much money did, did the rec pay for the floor and all the equipment? I mean, could you?
In Berlin. So it might actually be equitable. Exactly, yes. So I guess the question is, let's put, push Boylston aside. The question is to the committee, how do you feel about allowing Julie, this waiver would just be for this season and then we have to change the policy?
I agree, the policy has.
The policy has to change. Um, allowing Julie to not have a custodian there and she's in charge of that building.
Uh, just, just the gym area, not the building.
Yes, that's that area. The other option that Carol just put on the table was to agree to have Berlin pay for the three hours, just like Boylston does, and have the custodian come in and open the building on Saturday and Sunday morning and then come back and clean up, clean the bathrooms and clothes on Saturday evening and Sunday evening and.
So it would be six hours.
It would be six hours, exactly.
Right.
Right. My concern is also if nobody is in these buildings and if we do this blanket across the school.
No, we can't do this for.
I, I, well, but then that's kind of what, like I think you're saying, will cost, we have to do the same. Well, now we have and.
Is the initiation.
Something happens.
Element.
And I'm not just talking about security issues. I'm talking about the bathroom, mobile.
People don't have keys to Tohanto. We can't do that.
Something happens in the buildings and nobody even knows about it. The heat, the heat went out one other time. If something happens, the person in contact is gonna be Dan and then he's gonna be called on the weekends.
But Carol, if something happens in these buildings on the weekends, nobody's here and that happens, will you too? I mean, it's a gift that people are here.
Nobody's here. For example, I got a flood system. Nobody's watered.
Well, it does a flood. That's, I mean, that's extraordinary.
Hyalang goes out, I could give a.
Yeah.
I know when you go in and the jungle's.
Yeah.
You know, when like the story goes to another building.
Who's that?
Home.
That's why.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about like, you know, the end of an event, like maybe an hour worth of.
You can't.
Three hour minimum.
Minimum three hour for the custodians per day.
Yeah.
Which is just.
Oh.
As you can see, we exhausted this topic, Julie and I, right? So what do you guys think? Those are the options, really, like I, we've kind of gone through every avenue. So the option is to waive all fees, no custodian, Berlin only. I don't think we need to change Boylston or Tohanto. And the equity piece is because like you said, Berlin rec is paying for the floor. They're paying for the hoops in that facility. Boylston doesn't do that. We, no one does that for Tohanto. So that's option one. Option two, Carol's put it on the table. Three hours on Saturday, three hours on Sunday. The program is responsible for.
Can I ask?
Or the other option is go pound sand, Julie.
We're free.
So, so my question is.
We're keeping it at this. You gotta pay. Have these students already paid for basketball? Because whose pocket is this money coming out of?
Yes, ma'am, they have.
The, the fees are already there. So the, I don't know if the program probably doesn't have the cash to cover.
So, but they, have you, yeah, do you guys even have the cash to cover this and how?
No, it'll be impactful for sure.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Then you have to go back to families and.
That's. Or, yeah, they'll have to get donations or whatever. That would be the programs. We have to look at it from the school committee, but yes, that would be the programs issue.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
Yes, yeah, you're exactly right, Laurie. That was the issue that Julie was trying to present is that if she had known about this last summer, she could have changed her fee schedule. And actually, we looked at Berlin Youth Basketball pays significantly less than Boylston Youth Basketball. Because Boylston has those fees built in because we didn't know this. For some reason, they were getting charged a rental fee and a custodian fee and Berlin wasn't um last year. So.
And we, 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 there's that too. But I mean, they pay a thousand dollars and they have the usage fee. I don't, I don't know what usage fee is.
For who?
For, it was Boylston Elementary. For last year, it doesn't matter.
Whatever happens to be, but the ideal of type programs is affordable for families. This is, type programs are not trying to make profit here.
Should be.
They're just trying to give these kids an opportunity to have something, right? These towns do not have thriving recreation departments. They're volunteer run.
So what do you, what do you guys wanna do? Starting with like.
I mean, if I vote on this, it's voting my favorite because I'm a member of this, my kid plays here too, so maybe I should vote.
I mean, so does mine actually, ironically enough.
Well, your kid doesn't have to play for Berlin?
Yeah.
Yeah, both her kids.
Well, then we don't have, we're not gonna have a quorum.
I mean, I'll vote in my self-interest and not pay more if you want, but that's what it will be.
But I'm asking if you want no custodian in the building.
We won't pay more.
This, or do you want to pay?
You don't have to let parents get one.
Don't have to want.
You would have to ask the participants to.
Not to pay for the three.
Yeah, I think it's hard to ask, you know, a kindergarten parent who's showing up one hour a day for eight weeks to pay another forty dollars. I think that's absolutely.
I mean, couldn't, couldn't just be a janitor for Sunday to make sure everything's clean for Monday? I mean, is that the biggest concern?
Well, has the janitor been a problem before? You said.
Never.
Monday, like the bathrooms are not a problem on Monday morning?
Never.
I don't know where.
That's, I'm Italian.
I mean, I would guess it's not, not if you, if they're in for an hour, how many kids are actually wanting a bathroom? Carol, how do you feel?
How's the name?
All right.
I said everything I need to say about.
Okay, all right. So we know how Mike feels.
We're in the ocean.
So we have, this is the vote, then we have to waive this policy because we're out of compliance with policy if we do that.
We just have to strike parts of it. We can keep the top.
All right, so Julie, put your, so that means, Dan, are you listening to this? That means there would be no custodian. John, you're comfortable with this?
I think it gives us time to think through a more realistic.
I think it gives us time to think through a more realistic plan.
That's what I do.
Yeah. If we strike through now or just do a waiver?
Oh, no, this is just gonna be a waiver of policy.
Just for Berlin youth basketball only or any?
Berlin youth basketball only through the season, which ends February twelve, Julie?
But it's rec, I mean, there's many, so.
I would say, yes, this, well, they.
Not on the weekends, yeah.
I would say this is for any, any youth group or any five, one, C, three or.
So what happens now, we get a bunch of applications from other groups? Hey, your space is free. Try using.
No, but they would be, no, that's just with people that are receiving fees, yeah.
No, Julie, these are res.
What?
Yeah, these are resident groups.
No, Julie.
You don't, you just said any, five, one, C, three.
Yeah.
No, resident, resident.
Julie, then we have to change the policy.
Yeah, the whole thing.
The waiver we're gonna vote on right now, the waiver we're voting on right now is specific to Berlin youth basketball. Right now, all we're gonna do, so regardless, this policy is gonna take that to Laurie and Mike. Okay.
Sure.
Regardless, you guys can review it.
I'm sure all see you.
But you have to remember, keep that in mind, it, it's for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now. This is, I'm so mad.
Yeah, for a few hours.
Free lunch, baby.
Wait a second, I want free lunch. Sal, Carol.
Okay, Julie, the motion is gonna be specific to Berlin youth basketball for basketball season, we're not giving any more free passes to any other groups.
Now, given that.
Right now.
Actually, my question is already answered, so time being used during the business hours.
Yes. There's nothing else, so if there's another group that wants to come in on the weekends when Julie, Julie's already using the space for this. So it's like, let's say in March, somebody's like, oh, I heard it's free, we're just gonna come in and use the space. No, that, this, this vote.
I understand that.
It's not.
People, people just walk in.
Well, no, this vote specifically, the motion is just.
We don't ask for it, or is it just like?
No, the, the motion is just for Berlin youth basketball to waive all of this for the remainder of the basketball season, in the, for Berlin.
Well, because the, the director of rec will maintain the security as of the cleanliness.
Correct. Yes, because the president of Boylston youth basketball will.
So this, this what, for the next three weeks?
February twelfth.
No, February, the week, February twelfth, for the. I would like to go on record of saying, I, I think this should be done for Boylston as well.
Cindy, how do you feel about that?
I think we need time to talk about it, but I think there's a little discrepancy here because you're saying the rec is paying for that, or at Boylston they're not.
Yeah.
And Ryan has been doing this for years, I don't know how many years, and if we're talking about, it's not losing his job. But it's, it's taking something away, or you're taking away from something he's planned through, he's already set.
So good point. Can I add to that? Just, good point. Another, just to throw out there, the fees that are collected are used for the gym floor, for the, for different things, right?
Right.
So those would go lower, that's all. Just something.
I think Boylston, we keep at this, I get that you're looking for the equity.
They're looking at Berlin because they do.
Boylston rec isn't paying for anything for the school, Berlin rec is paying for the school.
Oh, yeah, they're paying it.
So I think the motion on the table should be specific to Berlin youth basketball for the remainder of the Berlin youth basketball season, there's nothing, no other.
And then this goes to policy and this policy would be great.
And then you guys have to, you guys can take this to policy and as long as it's done before, you know, the next season.
Well, no, because then that space could get used for like, we run basketball camps, that's not Berlin youth basketball, that's through the rec department.
Right, so hopefully by March or April, yeah, I don't mean like next basketball season, I mean like the next season.
Spring.
Spring.
Well, no, no, it doesn't, now you adjust your fees or whatever.
Right, 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 right.
Well, she's gonna adjust the fees, but do you want to end that policy, do you want to put a maximum on there? What if the program needs like?
Yeah, we'll, we'll hash through that.
You're gonna hash through that, that's what I'm saying. All right, so Julie, make your motion, please. Not to be rude.
Can I suggest something?
Yes, thank you.
So, given, given the money put in by the rec department for the floors and other gym equipment, the fees. I don't know, hopefully your ted.
Service fees and the rest.
Service fees.
I move to waive all fees for Berlin youth basketball for the remainder of their season through at least February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Does Nicole have? I'm watching.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
I'm an I as well, uh, any opposed?
We still have to vote.
Yes, you can, yeah, and Julie recused herself, and she is the president of Berlin youth basketball, all right, motion passes.
May I just say, I do appreciate, Mike made a point to Carol that we need to start following policy and that's what Carol was doing.
I a hundred percent agree, yep, so.
Yeah, so that, thanks to the obvious question, what are the policies?
For another meeting. Okay. We're gonna start making comments.
I only write, I don't.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tejant Mark Fidrich Foundation donation.
So what do you?
Second.
All in favor, all right, any discussion?
I have some questions on this.
Okay, go ahead.
So we had issues with, uh, other local companies and their donations and asking for money back when it wasn't applied, how they thought it was gonna apply. I was confused and wasn't providing the drive with this specifically mentioning the unified sports program? But best buddies information being included, is that really?
And I, I, I need clarification, because best buddies, um, is part of the, um, Special Olympics, part of the unified sports, it's, it's all, it's all kind of combined.
They're the same little entity? The same program that we have here?
Same. That's the same participants, it's the same, I, and I, I asked, I reached out to the Fidrich, um, to to get more clarification on that and she, she didn't respond.
Because the other thing, speaking of policy, is that the donation policy specifically says that the committee will spend the money as they see fit. But we do work to honor the wishes of the donor, which specifically says, we have a unified sports program.
Right.
We don't have best buddies, I know that's a separate vote coming there. So it's a little, there's some missing information, like if we vote on this.
And I, and I did reach out.
Yeah, I know, you did. I don't know if we.
If we vote on this and there's leftover money, technically we can use the money however we see fit.
It doesn't have to be leftover money, it's whatever.
We can use any of the money. So maybe when we do these votes, we should say to be used for.
Well, that's, that's the thing. So to be used for unified sports, but then it looks like there was a best buddies program to be run separately from this, because I see the, the financial breakdown of that program there. Which it looks like we're intending to use the money.
It's all, all, it's all the same participants. It, it is all of the same participants.
All right, so if we just say.
Same participants, but is it the same program? Because we already voted for the unified sports program, we have that going, that's ongoing. That's, I think was specific to what, weightlifting or something?
Weightlifting, but they wanna expand that, um, through the best buddies, they wanna expand it to bocce and.
And then we track.
And, and, and track.
Okay, good, I mean, that's the confusing part, because that information wasn't in. So the donor is saying, the donor, I don't know, it's confusing to me because I'm not as familiar with these programs. It sounds like two separate programs, I tried to search unified sports and best buddies to get any, get anything that said they were together. So I, I don't know, I'm just, we're, we're into the weeds and the details of policy here.
So I think maybe we modify the motion to say to be used for unified sports.
Sure.
And then if there's money left over, you have to take it back to the committee and, and we have to re-vote on how to use those funds.
No, just go to the next.
Or go, yeah.
So that's.
It would be in a rare situation, if the program somehow like.
So it looks like this is enough funding to go on here, whatever it wants to be done.
Are those other sports only through best buddies or are they under the unified sports umbrella? Should we have both names in motion, should we have best buddies and unified sports?
That's all what the donor's letter says.
The donor's letter says.
So, it's, so, so the donation came because we were, um, I was at school council and a member of school council, a community member, who has, um, knows the Mark Fidrich Foundation, okay, there's that connection. And so we were discussing that we were gonna do best buddies and then through best buddies will hopefully increase the unified sports and programming for, um, that group of students. And this person at the school council said, I can get you money to help you start that. And I'm like, great, so this is for, you know, best buddies and uni, you know, and the ex, extended unified because we need, um, nursing and also paraprofessionals, um, on staff when those programs are running. She's like, absolutely, you know, I'll give you some money. She came in the next day with thirty-five hundred dollars and said, get these programs going.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome, I'm totally in support of it.
Right. I, 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 I'm asked and I'm.
We have a local company sending it on, saying they want it back.
Right, and I asked for, I've asked for, I wrote the people and I said, can you please, we made this specifically outlined and they just, they didn't reply, they just wanted to go to this, really this group of students or encouraging them.
All right, I think if you say to be used for unified sports in the vote, I think we're covered. So the, the motion has to be amended, no?
I feel like it's best buddies.
Because who's, who's the prime best buddies?
I, I, that's not how I interpret it, I don't.
So best, so best.
I think that we are unified sports, now we have the best buddies. They might be under this kind of same umbrella, but if you prove it as unified sports, I think.
Then, then we can't, then we can't.
I have to, yeah.
The afrogram. I, like, we can't, because we can't, I feel like we should prove it as best buddies.
No, we still have unified sports.
We, we have one unified best buddies.
That's why.
We say unified sports are best buddies.
I think you've got it.
The letter, I have it right here in black and white, this specifically says unified sports are given two separate programs.
Yes, I read the letter.
I don't wanna get into a situation like a few months ago.
Lisa, when does this start?
We have a local company want their money back.
Um, I, I mean, I think they're, they're trying to pull together best buddies like as we speak, you know, they've been waiting.
Because we have been waiting for.
They've been waiting, can you explain how it's best buddies rather than unified sports?
I don't know.
Yes.
Special Olympics is definitely, best buddies are all supporting aspects of the same umbrella, yep.
Yeah, I think we're getting caught up on.
Yes.
Yeah, this is great, they wanna donate to youth, it's worth best buddies.
It's, I think, I, I think this would have as a light out, this is a good proposal.
So.
Of course.
Yeah.
Right, so, so can you explain how best buddies, like, is it?
Is into it?
Yeah.
Right, well, like, so you're, so unified. And best buddies are basically.
All right. All right, we're gonna take the vote as this, so the motion on the table was to approve the donation um, of thirty-five hundred dollars to Tejant from the Mark, I'm sorry, Fidrich, Fidrich Foundation. That was the motion on the table.
She did it nicely.
I said it. You said so, Laurie and then Julie, all right. Any more discussion? We're gonna vote as this.
So this is not to be specifically used, just to use however we see fit?
This is just to accept the donation and let the school use it.
Potentially be used for something else.
Children of disability, can we say children of disabilities?
Used according to, to the donor.
So, so.
All right, so make an amendment to say that used, to be used according to the letter, from the donor.
Yeah, to enrich the lives of children of disabilities.
Through. All right.
From focus on sports and sports education.
The last paragraph of the letter says, please direct these funds toward the unified sports and fitness program. Signed, warm regards and Jessica Fidrich.
All right, so.
So I will amend the motion to apply this money to the unified sports program as the donor wished.
Well, it says sports and fitness programs. Would that kind of be?
That's their, that's them describing their mission, right?
Towards unified sports and fitness programs, so fitness programs would be.
So as the donor wished?
No, so Lisa, we approve this and then we approve best buddies, to it, this then just go to best buddies because best buddies is part of unified sports.
Well, that was the question I asked, but nobody could answer.
She said yes.
I'm thinking yes, because that's what the letter does say, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the table.
The letter says nothing about best buddies.
But it says unified sports, so if they want to recreate best buddies.
Right, unified sports and best buddies, they're not the same.
But it's unified best buddies.
And why we need to vote to, uh, create the best buddies if it's the same thing, why is it?
So we should have voted for best buddies first, then.
No, no, no.
No, it's a re-intentioned unified sports.
Yes, it's a re-intentioned.
So if you say.
Where, where do I see that?
So in the last sentence, if you said, if we vote for unified sports and fitness programs, that should include anything that we might later vote other than, including best buddies.
The best buddies is a fitness program. I don't know what it is on the mast, honestly.
Yeah.
I think she just explained it was.
No, best buddies is for children that have special needs.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's a fitness program.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, it's like, oh, 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 sorry, oh, I thought you were, no, best buddies is like, when, yeah, they go, I know, I used to do it when I was in, like, I, I volunteered. You go.
This TV show, right, and he was a sponsor of that, right?
You go, yeah, you've got, like, there's kids that work with kids with special needs and they play sports, they play games, yes.
All right, so here, then I moved to amend the motion to spend the money as the donor asked and they're like, that should be blanked out.
Yep.
Yeah.
Someone want to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
I.
I'm an I.
I'm an I as well, that, the amendment passes. Um, anyone opposed? No, all right. So, um, so now I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation of thirty-five hundred dollars to, to Tejant from the Mark Fidrich Foundation as amended, right?
The amended motion or specifically say?
To be used for, as the donor wishes, yep.
Do you second?
All in favor?
I'm starting.
All right, motion passes. All right. Um, could I have a motion to approve the creation of the best buddies club at Tejant?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I'm an I.
I'm an I as well.
Uh, before, the highest number, it doesn't say anything in here about who's gonna run the program? Who's, the funding, it looks like it's only for one year, what happens next year? Does this become part of the budget?
So that would be up to, it's Michelle Peterson, she runs our program for the Tools for Living, um, program and the, um, Tools for Living program and, um, those students with special needs. So she was wanting to, you know, start this program to see if, you know, would, you know, benefit the students, the whole school here. And she was, she was, she was willing, um, to come and speak today, um, but that would be, um, a difficult ask to have somebody sit through four hours of meeting to come for a moment, so, yeah, that would.
All we need is the information in the drive about who's gonna run the program.
Moving forward, yeah, moving forward, I think we said for approval of clubs, we need to know the cost to the district, who's gonna run it and any other pertinent information.
So I guess after this year, will it be part of the budget is my question.
So my take on it is that it's funded from the donation that you just approved. The budget is in the drive, it doesn't say the name of the person who's the advisor, but it, but there is a budget.
Cost is on there.
Right.
And it is not in next year's budget because it's funded by the donation that you approved.
So this doesn't start until next year or is it starting?
No, it starts.
It's gonna start as soon as it gets approved, because it was, it was on the agenda for last.
I think it's like, uh, it was like thirty-two hundred or something to run it and the donation is thirty-five. So that's one year, right, or is that one year?
No, we discussed this, this is for this year only.
So maybe there'll be a recurring donation.
So.
Yeah, and that's what I.
Oh, yeah, so the budget was going to be adjusted, like, there was additional expenses that would be stressed. So we move up the expenses, it'll be used.
Yes, and then there was my question, so it's a one-year?
It's a one-year.
Yeah, try it out and see, and if it's successful.
Right, and maybe we'll be lucky winning the donation again next year.
Or maybe we don't.
I, I think that the, it's, there's a very good likelihood it would be, it needs to be supported.
Right.
Exactly.
It is.
Could I have a motion for approval of the Sports Card Club at Tohonto?
So. Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I understand that you're upset that we're here for four hours, but, I mean, there's things that need to be discussed. Um, so the Sports Card Club, this is good, it says who's gonna advise and, and all that, there's no cost, so that's great, but it mentions specifically uh, buying and selling and trading cards.
So I, I told them, because that was written up by one of the students and I told them specifically that they couldn't do the buying and the selling.
Okay, good, because that was my, we're getting IRS issues and, and all that.
Right. Right, no, no, that I, I told, like.
Well, I had to make that clear.
So straight amend the motion, straight fine.
Yeah, we had to make that clear.
Yeah.
The other part about trading.
So they're not gonna trade.
They're taking trade, yeah.
The, the other thing about trading, so here's my thing about trading, right, I just went through this. Kids trade and sometimes they get pressured into trading things, they might, I want to trade. And that's fine if it's at lunch or on the bus or outside of school, but we're actively endorsing this now.
Right.
What kind of safeguards are there gonna be so that, you know, kid doesn't come in the next day and say, I feel like I got traded out of something I didn't want to? Then you got parents calling the schools, hey, why are you taking my kid's thing, I bought him that for Christmas or whatever. Are there plans to deal with that?
Um, permission slip, as we get, yeah, permission slip.
Let's make sure we include that.
That's a very good idea.
Yeah, you're agreeing, alright.
Yeah, let's make sure we include that.
There's.
They need to sign.
Pokemon drama, I'd be, yes.
Right.
So you're gonna need to sign some sort of waiver that you're not gonna be upset if you decide, you, you're free to choose and trade what you want, but once you do, that's final, there doesn't need to be some. Will parents need to be involved in signing that maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, permission slip would, yeah, parent.
Let's make sure we specify.
So we can amend, we'll strike buy and sell.
We don't have to amend, we just make the motion to specifically approve this, mind this needs buying and selling uh, making sure there's a permission slip for the trading.
No, so move.
No, we do have to amend, alright.
Yeah, there's a mandate, yeah, yeah.
We have four hours, I mean.
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to amend it because the motion's.
Yeah, so I, I'll move to amend the motion to specific, uh, to specify there will be a buying or selling and that a permission slip will be needed to join the club as a waiver on the trade of cards, all trades are final. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
I mean, it's a monster agenda, I think that way.
It is, it is a monster.
Okay. Um, so could I have a motion to approve the Sports Card Club as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
I'm an aye as well, motion passes. Before I make a motion, is, is there any other questions about the Nature's Classroom trip fundraising or the donation from AP Bureau Guard or the donor's choice? Or the MOU club stipend?
I may have no questions on Nature's Classroom, but I have something else.
Alright, go ahead, which ones, Mike?
Uh, let's see, well, Overgarden. Uh, again, it doesn't say, uh, it specifically says for music, right, instruments for is music. So let's make sure we have that.
In the amendment?
What was it?
I mean, in the motion?
Uh, the conservators, I had no idea what that was and, uh, so it says specifically for.
Cindy, did you wanna just go into a little detail?
Yes, Jonah and I met with, um, the music team, there was funding needed, we put out their donations. Just very nice man stepped up and so the music program. He didn't give us a letter, he just, we wrote his description. And it goes to the music program for those.
So generous.
Yeah.
Okay, what about donor's choice, did you have a question on that?
Uh, I thought this looked like a cash donation, but earlier tonight someone said something about it's actually materials.
What it is a big, so donor's choice is a, one of those websites where you, uh, posting neat things, it's, uh, a lot of teachers do it. This individual situation is a new opportunity, now that fundraising has to be approved ahead of time. Um, because she did her own job and did it all at the end of this time, so. Um, what I like about it, because Nancy and I talked about these, some of these online fundraisers that you can't function. Uh, in donor's choice, you can think list what you're going to get, and for her it was, um, sensory materials and stuff. For our program, our Bridges program, for some special needs classes.
So it's fundraising, not donation?
Well, yeah. It's a donation that comes from a fundraising group.
That's a completely different policy.
I know it is, yeah, that's the first thing I said, teacher didn't understand it, she didn't get it. But the ones.
So that policy needs to be revisited for such websites like that.
I think it covers, I think it would cover that if it was all, I don't really think it's a big deal, I don't think there would be much to do.
There's something which is not allowed control.
There's a, yeah, there's an issue about using the school's name, like, what does that website, will that website collect data or anything like that?
There's, yeah, and how responsible is it, you know, you, I put my thing up on
Right.
whatever, ChineseMoney.com, you know, I get all this money, do I have to really spend it on?
Yeah.
This is kind of what we ran into last year with that one group and it was, it was a similar website.
Yeah.
The key to this is that how it is, like, here we have the link, we see how it was posted, we see what this particular teacher asked for. And it's our job when it, well, when this is accepted, that's accepted with the use that it was posted for. And I think with that other situation, there was a lot of confusion with that. My opinion, if you follow that, we're good.
Okay, what about the MOU club stipend, do you have a question on that one?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot of questions on that.
Okay, who's that for, Lisa?
Well, it's an MOU, first of all, should we be discussing that in open session or executive session?
Well, it's just a club stipend.
But it's an MOU.
Can you say again what you're?
Should we, it's, it's an MOU which specifically in the MOU says it's going to be attached to the collective bargaining agreement. Should that be discussed in open session or executive session?
It's reallocating it though? That's how it's going? I mean, some of the stuff is like from school, but it's not personnel, it is.
It's the existing funds, just reallocating it to.
Well, that's another question I have about it, but.
Oh, yeah, this was, you guys already voted on this.
We did.
Yeah.
Why is it in here?
Yeah, I thought we did too, it's funny you say that.
Yeah, you already voted on this. It was from all the different clubs.
Right.
Yes, so what's the MOU?
I know.
Well, so, alright, that being what it might be. Number four says this agreement shall be attached to the party's collective bargaining agreement, it shall be made a part thereof. So that is what brings up my question. Should this be discussed in an open session or executive session since it looks like, without knowing this information, it's possibly a type of negotiation, I'm not sure, that's my question. The other issue I have with it is, um, number three, well, I guess we should answer that question before we get into anything else.
Wait a minute, this is from the BBEA, this isn't from you, Lisa.
Right, no, this is, you guys already voted on this.
Um.
So it's going around the world.
Oh, I think, I think.
It's a, it's.
Alright, so we have a, we have an agreement with the CBA, what is it? I'm very.
The IBA.
Thank you. So we have an agreement with that. You appro. Both parties have agreed to change some clubs, just transferring over to different clubs, the same funds. But the contract that you all signed says differently. This is just gonna, something that you need to approve and sign and everybody's good. So now.
Right, now it's signature party, just the signature.
There is a whole part in the teacher's contract that stipulates club stipends because there's amounts that we stipulated in the contract.
It goes to a map.
The contract is.
That we do, it's just a change.
The pre-education.
She's totally right.
Yeah, so that's why I was just.
This is a.
We already approved, I guess, we already.
It's already approved in the contract, we can't foster off the contract.
It's approved in the contract, then we don't need MOU. If, MOU would.
You are agreeing because we voted in the meeting on the other amounts. We never caught it when we voted before. The amounts.
In reality, when you approved it before, the prob, the MOU probably should have allowed it, but it didn't, so now it's coming on here.
Alright, well, then my next question is number three. It says funds will be transferred from two non-functioning positions to newly funded stipend positions. What are the two non-functioning, because I see money going out of five and into five. So is this written incorrect, does it need to be revised?
Which says five to five.
I, are you on the MOU?
We need to add.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, MOU is.
No, it's mine, but, so he's.
Yes.
No, it says two.
Number three.
Another question here, so it should say five non-functioning to five new clubs, yeah, that's a.
Few total
Yeah, the non-functioning is zero though.
The beginning is. Yeah, that's zero.
But it's confusing because it's saying it's being transferred from two. I don't know what two is being transferred from that are non-functioning, but then A, B, C, D, and E are five different.
I think.
Positions building into five.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably, Lisa said that.
Non-function.
It's just a typo, I mean, we have.
That's, that's the question, is it a typo?
Yeah, it says all.
I, I mean, I, I, like, I should just make this, it's not a non-functioning, it goes to.
Where's the question?
The first row is non-functioning, so the first part is non-functioning.
The word two is should not be there.
The word two should not be.
Is that the word document, if someone will leave that?
Should it not be there, should it be?
They used to be.
But they were, they were.
They were.
Um, for, for the following or whatever.
Yeah.
And I've been, I mean, it's. I think the two should just be up.
If they don't specifically say five, other non-functioning positions? Could there be some on the future?
Well, we, we.
Not all of those five.
All sections are done, so the only certain.
I remember forty of them signed, I don't remember.
It was those five, we voted on those, and they contradicted what it said in the contract, so now Nancy's trying to fix it.
I'm just trying to get the contract.
I got to say what was happening.
Yes, that's.
From these, Carol, you put the word these in.
The two should be up, I think.
Yeah, she took the word two out, I mean, she meant the word these, which is the following. So A, but now you need.
Okay, as long as you're specific about what's on there, you're not, if you're not specific about it.
I agree, okay, that was good.
You could have six more, you want to do something that people would be able to agree with.
Okay, anything else on that one, for example?
Um.
I was just curious what Mind Matters is.
Oh, John explained that, Mind Matters.
What, what?
No, these.
I was just curious, like, real quick.
Didn't, didn't you have some, did Mind Matters?
So Mind, Mind Matters is, um, to you know, support social emotional health among the middle and high school students. They support, um, refresh day, um, and they're supporting, you know, speakers to come in. So, that's, that's what they do. And, you know, just, you know, supporting medical, going to school.
Any other questions? Alright. Could I have a motion to approve the BES and BMS Nature's Classroom trip fundraising efforts?
What, why, we didn't vote on that?
No.
We did not, no, I just talked about all of them and I want to bang all those down.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, motion passes. Could I have a motion to approve the thousand-dollar donation from AP Bureau Guard Hardwood and Tile Company to Boylston Elementary and Berlin Memorial for instrument purchases and music program?
So, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, motion passes. Um, could I have a motion to approve the donation of four hundred and seventy-seven dollars from donor's choice to Berlin Memorial School?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Okay, we've already approved Whitson, we've already approved the facility waiver for Julie. Could I have a motion to approve the MOU cl, club stipend at Tohonto as currently written? Carol made the changes.
Wait, that's currently written?
Carol just made the changes.
There's a PDF in there too, you won't be able to change, so there'll be two different versions in there, so we should probably specify.
Is the word version? They have to make sure in the code that you get the word version, delete the PDF in there for that MOU.
Start the word two.
Has she already, or just delete the PDF, Carol already fixed the word document. Yeah, delete the PDF, you can turn that word document to a PDF when you put it, when you zip it, to put it up to the. Alright, so the motion's on the table, did we get a second, Kim?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm aye as well, that motion passes. Alright, could I have a motion to approve Superintendent Costello's goals?
So move.
Any discussion? Fantastic job. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm aye as well, motion passes. Okay, we have three policies we need to vote on. Does anyone have any discussion on policy CHA, CHC, or GBAA? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve policy CHA, development of procedures? Policy CHC, procedures dissemination, and policy GBAA, which is a policy against harassment and discrimination of employees and adult volunteers?
So hold on one second, I, I think the motion is wrong, I believe CHC has been combined with CHA.
Oh, okay, oh, they're combined, so is it one combined?
Yeah, so it's, we're only approving CHA and GBA.
I'm sorry, Laura.
That's okay, no, it's, it's confusing.
So that motion is gonna die.
Nobody's there.
Yeah. Alright, so could I have a motion to approve policy CHA, which is the development of procedures which replaces policy CHC, correct?
Well, and now includes.
Alright, includes policy CHC.
CHC, the procedures dissemination.
Which is the procedures dissemination. And policy GBAA, which is the policy against harassment and discrimination of employees and adult volunteers.
So move. Second.
All, uh, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, that motion passes. Alright, did I miss any, we have a bunch of first reads, so you guys can take a look at those, did I miss any votes? We jumped around. Okay. Alright, so future agenda items, one thing Jess and I talked about was the survey. So Jess, is that something that you and Lisa want to tackle at your next, um, student success meeting or?
So it was something that came up in our super, uh, school committee self-assessment.
The self-assessments, right?
Well, no, ours, it's our school committee self-assessment, it came up as an item that we were not addressing. And so it was reaching out to the community to, I can get the specific item.
So the superintendent evaluation subcommittee also does our self-evaluation for the school committee. And one of the items is to receive the public's input. So Jess's suggestion was to perhaps do some sort of survey. But I'm not sure that falls under our per, because we, we were talking about how, how would we get the results, what would the questions be, who would, who would go through all of those?
In the past, it was the parent advisory committee to the superintendent, which no longer exists.
Or doing portrait of graduate instead.
Yeah, so, so that was the former entity that came up with the survey.
So was the survey, to survey, was, was the question?
It would be in general to poll the community to see, get a pulse on how things are going.
Things we're doing well, things we're not doing well.
So to me, that fall, I feel like it could go either way, um, but I feel like given how much Laura has tasked on her plate for the policy and chairing the superintendent.
Oh, yeah, just.
So I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, and I know you have one on your plate too, so I don't know if,